Special Town Council Board of Education meeting on the number 29, 2020. Before we begin, I want to do a roundtable. Everyone is multiball online. So Steve Jones, Council Chair, and I'll start from left to right with Jacob Mari. Do you want to say your name? And Board members are free to ask.
Jacob Mari, Board of Education.
Chris Griffin, Board of Education. Christine Aplin, Board of Education. Colleen Zetan, Town Council. Actually, Longren, Board of Education. Luthia Shae, Board of Education. Dana Feldman, Board of Education.
Tony Holt, Board of Education.
So, Town Council. I'm Jan Gallo, Board of Education.
Jane Register, Board of Education.
Well, Willits, for the town.
Lisa Hancock, Temporal Town Manager for the town.
And I do recognize they have a couple of officials online. So if you want to raise your hands, now you yourselves introduce yourselves.
A point of privilege, Mr. Jones. We can barely hear you. There's a lot of noise in the background, and I couldn't hear the introduction for about half the people.
I don't get the vices yet. I'm making some other noise, but otherwise I'll encourage everyone to speak loudly.
Your microphone is also cutting out.
How much is it cutting out?
I, it's going to be very difficult to be able to participate in this meeting with the way it's set up right now. It's very difficult to hear about two-thirds of the people who are sitting there, and it cuts out in the middle of a, of your sentences. I, maybe Mr. Lubah can speak to that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if you could just, just say something again, and I, because I mean, I was hearing it fine. There was a little issue, but whatever you did to correct it, it seemed to correct itself.
Okay, we'll do a quick test. See if this is, everyone can hear me clearly now?
Yeah, I, that, I could hear you fine. Thank you.
Okay.
For the record, Lou Lubah, Town Council.
Thank you, Council Lubah. All right. So there's no other issues with the audio? That seems like you did turn off the noise, and it seems like just want to write everyone to speak very clearly and loudly as possible when we're speaking, as well identifying ourselves. So we'll move into the joint discussion with the Town Council. Oh, sorry about that. Point, Sammy Condon, just want to introduce yourself for the record, and to speak loudly and clearly when you're all settled in. All right, thank you, Sammy. All right, so I am over to joint discussion with the Town Council and Board of Education regarding the artificial turf for the capital project. If Lisa or Dr. Willits would like to start off with a brief summary of the item.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Lisa Hancock. For those of you who do not know me, I'm the interim temporary town manager. And just a little, I included in your packet this evening some background regarding the artificial turf field. Online tonight, we also have Peter Sutaba, who is in charge of facilities for the Board of Education. We also have Scott Lappin, who is our Public Works Director, and Bruce Watt, who is our Recreation Director, and all have certain background knowledge regarding the artificial turf field. The, a little bit of background, back in 2012, 13, the artificial turf was installed at the high school. That particular project was a little over a million dollars, and we funded it with state grant funding, donations, and some bond issuance. That was supposed to be paid back through charges to the various recreational athletic leagues in the town, and then there was a misunderstanding as where the balance was supposed to come from, the reimbursed debt, which was supposed to be from the, the talent recreation, I'm not sure of the exact athletic organization. So there was a misunderstanding there, what they were supposed to try to do. Different fundraising events to make up the difference, and that happened, some of it didn't. So in the meantime, the sports leagues, the sports organizations have been paying their share each and every year. There was a little bit of an allowance last year because of the COVID constraints, and they couldn't use it. And I'm not going to get into all the details, but that funding information of what we've received so far is in the report that I shared with you. So now we're looking at the point where we need to replace the field in a couple of years, and there really hasn't been any funding put aside because the field did not generate sufficient revenue to set reserves in place to replace that field. So the only alternative is to issue some sort of debt, whether it's a lease financing or, or bond issue, or some other alternative that may have to be considered. We're being told right now that the cost to replace that field is about 850,000. I know this report says eight point five, but we've received some other kind of information since this was put together. There, there's other information in here regarding different questions that have been asked over the last few months, so I tried to put it in. There was a warranty. There's a maintenance agreement between the board and the town, and part of what I think we'll be discussing this evening as well is that overall shared service maintenance agreement as well as the artificial turf. The current condition of the field, it's starting to wear. They say we may have at least another year or two before it has to be replaced. So we, we worked with the town engineer to try to get some ideas of what would be the most beneficial thing to do, and certainly is discussed among everyone involved as to how to proceed. So we looked at what the cost would be to eliminate the artificial turf and just replace it with sod, and then we also looked at replacing the artificial turf. My summary shows that the artificial turf is more desirable than real grass in the effects that it, you know, because there's many of it, many issues with the grass field, although the downside of that is that it's going to be costly, and it will have to be replaced every 10 years or so, 10 to 12 years. So these are the things you have to balance when trying to make a decision. But the, the grass field will require a free draining base underneath the loam, so it'll dry quickly. If it doesn't dry quickly, you're going to lose playing time on the field. The field will have to be irrigated, if you have grass, in order to not develop weeds and not to burn out. The grass would have to be mowed and repainted weekly, which will require more staff time to do that. The artificial turf does not require that because the lines are basically sewn right into the turf itself. The high school uses, for the, the high school uses the football field, the soccer, lacrosse, both men's and women. With all this playtime, the grass will wear out very quickly, and in areas such as the goal mouth, the penalty kick area, the face mask, the face, the face off soccer, soccer and lacrosse, all these issues can only be addressed with no playing on the field for a period of six weeks with new sod being put down every few months or grass to Germany. So it takes away some of the playing time, but you'd have to find alternate spots while that is being rejuvenated. The cost to replace the sod would add to the annual cost, and we don't have an estimated cost at this time. Line painting can be a challenge. For instance, soccer, soccer uses white lines, lacrosse and football use different colors. Different paints would need to be purchased, and it would have to be done frequently. The artificial turf has all the colors already built into it, and you don't have to keep changing. The artificial turf would not require fertilization or other similar maintenance. The artificial turf would allow for more playing time, playing time, and less relocation costs. There's certainly, you know, a lot of cost benefits that, you know, we need to consider. It, you know, could be a community's concern. Community may be used to that field and not want to change. I have no idea what, what the community's thoughts are on that at this time. But certainly, it's up to the Town Council and the group to decide what we would want to proceed with this. In any event, if, if you do go with the artificial turf, having it put in again, I would recommend that we start building a way to replace it in 10 years, so we're not trying to hit it, get hit up all at once for 850,000, $850,000, $850,000. Currently, I've included it in next year's, a year after next capital improvement plan. I'm working with a financial advisor to have it built in as a 10-year amortization schedule, which means that you pay it off over 10 years rather than 20, because you want it to be for the life of the asset. So that's certainly going to impact our debt somewhat if, if we were to proceed that way. That's one scenario I'm looking at. There are different things. We're trying to play around with those numbers. So that was a brief, not brief, just overview, and certainly there's more information in the document, some cost, cost analysis and all that.
Thank you, Lisa. Dr. Will, do you have any additional commentary you'd like to provide? I know that Lisa sent me an email that Peter is limited in his time, so if there are additional commentary, offer them a chance to speak as well.
Yeah, I'd, I think Lisa's done a great job. I think the documents and materials have been out for some time, so I would defer to Peter. Peter's been gracious enough to be here for a while, so I would say if people could, you know, if they wanted to ask him questions, definitely, I think a good time to introduce him.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Will. So I guess at that point, I will open the floor to questions, but I encourage many councilors or Board members have questions. For Pete Salva, please direct those first to them, so that they can be answered at the meeting. Does anyone that would like to ask a question? You can signify here on Zoom with the raising hand button for councilors, who we've seen Council Lubah. Otherwise, someone just raises their hand in the library drawing room. I'll just identify you by missing your hand.
Mr. Jones, I'm sorry, it's Lou Lubah. If we can, just to make it a little bit easier for everybody to see what's going on and to see, see the room, since I, I think that all of us have the agenda, and that if we could just reduce that, that way I think that at least on the screen side here, that we'll be able to see everybody on the Zoom, rather than just having just the, the small amount that we can see. Just a personal request.
Lisa, I don't know if there's any way if you can adjust that a little bit.
I think that we could probably just close it out unless there's, unless there's a true need to keep the agenda up there.
We can share it out if you'd like. Yeah, disclose the screen share.
I think we'll for a little bit, but in case if anyone in the public that wants to see the packet, if any references that are made, want to reshare that screen for them. But otherwise, for the time being, we can stop the screen share for a moment.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all I have at this point for right now.
And then, believe, Colleen, did you have, I think I said your answer again?
Yeah, I have two quick questions for Mr. Salva. I know Mr. Hancock just said that the unofficial check is now 850,000. Did the, also the grass field go up as well? Or Dr. Willlet, do you know what I mean by that? That the grass field increases well, because Lisa just said it went up 850,000 to the check field.
I would, I would just leave an assumption that everything's going up, but.
And then, I think Mr. Hancock, you said that unofficial turf is good for 10 years. I'm under the assumption it's at least 15.
10, 10 to 12 years. You know, 12 years is kind of pushing the end of the field, and that's usually the life.
Yeah, I know Scott Lappin also, they do, they've done work in the field this evening. He'd be a good person to ask respect to increase costs for that process.
And he's here as well, if you'd like to know.
Hey, guys. This is Pete. I just kind of want, wanted to speak to lifespan of the turf field. Based upon the fact that we have multiple different sports using different sections of the turf field at different times of the year, spring, fall, winter, and so on, summer, that will shorten the lifespan of that field a bit because you have just different types of wear. You have different types of gear with football versus soccer. You have lacrosse sticks hitting the, the field. You've got the wear points from the penalty, the penalty kick area in soccer, the corner kick areas, the faceoff areas, and so on. So with that in mind, if this was a single sport field, like, you know, soccer and CFC or something like that, you could kind of focus on fixing some of the wear areas of that specific field and extend the lifespan longer. But we actually have some pretty consistent wear throughout our field based upon the fact that we do have multiple different types of sports. So that will shorten a lifespan, and you're probably in the 10 to 14 years, probably would be the very most, based upon the fact that we have such a vast, vast amount of different programs and sports that do use that field.
I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Colleen. Town Council, Shavita, followed by Council Rujia.
Perfect. Mr. Salva, could you let us know approximately how many hours weekly it would need to maintain a sod field? This hand has mentioned the mowing the lot, mowing the grass, painting the lines. What, how, how much time would that take weekly to, to maintain that?
I, I currently do not oversee the actual mowing of the grass fields, but if, if you look at actually what is needed as far as weed trimming, mowing of the field, fertilizing that, that field, watering it, lining it on a weekly basis, you could be in upwards of one guy just assigned there for eight hours a week, every single week, to actually do all that, that, the work. So that does add up a lot over time. Scott might be able to speak a little bit more in regards to the actual manpower that he has within his own crew. But, you know, I've got to look on my side, too. I'm going to deal more with more broken sprinkler heads, because that does actually happen. I get them on the other fields in baseball, softball, and so on. So there is additional maintenance cost with that. We'd have to look at the size of the irrigation pumps, as well as the storage tanks, to see if that will basically work well for us. I think it will, but we're going to have to rotate watering schedules if, if that is the case. And then it just comes down to, to field use time. You're going to have to rotate different sports on there. You're going to use the practice fields more often, which will create more wear on those fields also. So if you go grass field there, you've got to look at your other grass fields, because they're going to see a lot more wear, too, because now we have to rotate everybody around. And then scheduling will make it difficult also as well because of that rotation of fields.
Thank you, Pete. Lisa, did you want to have Scott over?
Also have Scott provide input, if that would be okay?
Yes, that's right.
Scott Lappin, could you please sign on first? Thank you.
Sure. Good evening. When we looked at what we figured was going to go into this for maintenance, it's, it's probably more than eight hours a week. It's probably closer to two full days. We have to mow the field every week to keep the grass short enough for when they're playing soccer and lacrosse especially. Again, two different colors of paint. The, the maintenance that goes into that, it's not like we can, we have one line painter, so we can go out, paint the white lines. Then we have to go back and flush the whole system out, come back and paint whatever color, whether it's blue or red for the other sport that's playing. One of the other things that has to be kept in mind, which is, it's been touched on a little bit, is when it comes time for us to do repairs in front of the goal mouths, the penalty kick area, the faceoff areas. If we put sod down, sod probably, it takes about six weeks for it to reroute. If we don't go with sod and we go with grass, it's going to take much longer. You're going to lose a full season on that field. And then this means relocating all those different sports to practice fields and what have you. You're not going to get the same quality of play out of it. The other thing that I'm sure nobody has lost sight of at this point was how wet of a summer we had. July and August, we had, I, I forget what the exact number was, how many inches of rain. But if you walked out on that synthetic turf field the day after it rained, you could walk out there, as long as we had, it hadn't rained in probably eight or 10 hours, you could go out there and you could play on that surface because of the free draining base below it, the drainage system that's out there. If we had had a natural grass field out there, it wouldn't matter how, how good of a base you put underneath it. You put a nice sandy gravel underneath it, the loam is still going to hold the water. If you try to go out there and plant that, you are going to destroy the field, and then we're going to be out of luck for at least a year. I know that the, the rain's been gone for a while, but it's, it's, you know, it still sits there pretty fresh in my mind, and all the guys in the DPW. The, as far as the, the maintenance goes, I, I really think that we would have to allocate at least two full days. That's providing we don't get the aforementioned rain. If we get two days of rain, we can't go out on that field and start mowing. We're just going to have clumps. We can't paint. We can't do anything. And then it just snowballs into the next week. Whereas with the artificial turf, as Lisa said, the lines are sewn right into the turf. It's a, I know it's a costly endeavor, but when you look at what it would cost you to take that field out, put in loam, and make sure that that field is kept up to the standards that you would expect to see at a high school, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of money and effort that go into that. Any, any real technical questions? We have Jonathan Hickock with CHA. He's on as well. He works with our town engineer. He had a lot of input on this whole project. So if you'd like to direct any of your questions towards him, I'm sure he's here to answer those.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Scott, so do you have any other questions before I go to Councilor DeChambeau?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so yeah, Council Rujia, then followed by Council Lubah. Council Lubah, you can go first, followed by Council DeChambeau.
I was just going to submit the floor to her, but that's, that's all.
You know better.
All right. Well, just, just a few questions that I had regarding the lifespan of the, of the turf, where I know that Peter just mentioned that we were looking at a possibility of a 10 to 14 years on it. I think that that's what we're looking at for, for this current turf, or even longer for this current turf, where we are now, we started talking about replacing it when, when I first came on two years ago. So you're talking, that was really a seven year out of 10, out of 10 to 14, before we actually had to start looking at replacing it. And I'm just concerned about the wear and tear, where you're talking, that Peter was talking about it, where you're going to have more wear in certain areas. And unlike the, the grass where you could, or the sod where you could replace it if there's wear, if there's wear in those areas, how do we repair something like that? I mean, that's, that's my first question is, if there's an issue regarding the wear in certain areas, which just would, I think would not fall under warranty because it's normal wear and tear, what's the, you know, what would, how do we do that? And what would, what would the cost be on that? That's my first question, for whomever can answer it.
This is John Hickock from CHA. I, in your current field, I'm, I'm assuming that those areas are all, the, the goal areas, your faceoff areas are, are all one piece of turf. In a replacement, if you're finding that those areas are, are wearing excessively quick and want to maintain that, that area specifically, there are options that can be put into the design that'll allow those areas to be replaced separately, almost utilizing like Velcro on those pieces of turf, so that you can replace those areas rather than replacing the entire field. On an existing field, those areas can be cut out and replaced with a, with a piece of turf. It's just like your carpet in your house, for, for lack of a better term, that it can be cut out and sewn back in, in the short term if those are excessively worn, so that, you know, any, any safety requirements are maintained within, within the goal areas or those high, high traffic areas that, that the turf wears quicker than that, you know, that, that 10 to 14 years might be something that you, you know, in goal areas, especially with lacrosse and cleats and things of that nature, sometimes we see those that, you know, five-year intervals, get a replacement of the crease area, so that, that 10-foot circle gets replaced, and I, I'm, you know, back to a, you know, a serviceable condition, if that answers your question, sir.
Thanks, Jonathan. It does, but then my follow-up question, that is, is something like that kind of covered under warranty? Or is that something that we would then have to bear the cost once again for replacing a turf?
Yes. So, so your warranty is going to be eight, eight, eight years is basically any turf is typically going to be about an eight-year warranty. I think there are a couple out there that are claiming a 10, but in general, it's an eight-year warranty on the turf. Excessive wear in a crease area is not necessarily going to be covered under your warranty. If the seam were to tear, or a, you know, a carpet pulled away from a kneller, or something of that nature, that would be warranty type items. If you had a, you know, a breakdown of your fiber for some reason that, 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 you know, was not anticipated, that would be covered under warranty. But wear areas add a crease or a faceoff X is not going to be covered under warranty.
Okay. So then basically, we're looking at the same type of issue, just in a different scale, for if we were going to have like sod or grass, we're still looking at the same type of wear and tear. It's just one, we're replacing it with grass or sod, and then having to wait for it. The other one is that we would be replacing a section of, of astroturf or whatever turf that would be, that would be used to cover that. Is that correct?
That's correct. You know, as you said, when you replace sod, and as Scott indicated as well, you solder grass, you're going to have an excessive wait time, where these repair areas could be, could be completed and back in service in, in a few days, based on, based on the repair. Also, in the, in the, you know, replacement of the turf, if you were to replace the turf, it could be worked into the specification that those high wear areas, your faceoff X, your, your crease areas, your corner kick areas, that, that those are worked in for two replacements during the, the lifespan of the turf. So that turf is bought at the time of the, of the install, rather than buying it later and paying escalation and things of that nature on those. So those can be worked into that, into that process as it, as you go through that design.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then my next question will be directed either to Scott or Peter regarding the maintenance for the, for the turf field. I mean, I know that, Scott, you were saying about how you would have to mow it and then maintain it and all these other things. What kind of maintenance are you looking at? Because I know that at least for the fall, fall sports and things like that, you'd have to go on there and still have to maintain it to some degree regarding the leaf blowing, the clearing, that kind of stuff regardless. But how long are you dealing with it as far as maintaining the turf on a regular basis right now?
Are you talking about the synthetic turf?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I am. Thank you, Scott.
Okay. What we do is, we have a tractor that's stationed up at the high school. And what we do is we go over that turf. And what we do is we go over that turf typically once a month. And it's, what it does is it rejuvenates the rubber pellets underneath to kind of bring them back to life as well it has, as it has a magnet on it, you know? Not singling anybody out, but people who use barrettes or, or whatever, we pick up an awful lot of that stuff that gets intertwined in the, into the synthetic turf. That all gets caught into a tray, we clean it out. We go out and do that once a month. Other than that, every springtime, we, there's a, a firm that comes in and goes out and tests for density as well as they go over and they sanitize the field the first time. And then after that, it's pretty much ultraviolet rays. They keep it, keep it clean because you have, you know, bloodborne pathogens, whatever. But as far as the synthetic turf, the, the maintenance is, I don't want to say it's minimal, but it's a lot less than regularly grass.
Okay. And then also you brought up another great point regarding the type of turf where right now, are we looking to have the same type of turf replace what we have on there now? I guess that's my main question is what type of turf are we looking at? Because I've heard some issues regarding the, the whole type of rubber pellet turf, the type, type of turf that we're using now where it's prone to more easily wear and tear. And are there other types of turf that we're looking at that, like the synthetic turf? I don't know if anybody can answer that.
I would, I would go out and say that yes, you know, back when this field was initially installed, that was the industry standard, the small rubber pellets, but with all the health concerns over those pellets and what have you. That in my opinion, from what I understand and understand with this proposal would be that the, the artificial turf as well as all of those pellets would be eliminated and a brand new base, a state of the art base for today would be installed and then the turf over that. But again, John can elaborate on that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not completely aware of what the replacement turf is for, for here, but there are a multitude of turf options that you can choose from. And, and a multitude of options that you can choose from for your, for your infill, whether that be organic infills versus sand and rubber. You know, virgin rubber versus not virgin rubber. There, there, there's, there's, I, we have vials and vials and vials of all of the different infills that you can choose from. They all have pros and cons and that, I think that would be part of the, part of the design processes is identifying the pros and cons to those. Some have more maintenance than others and some have longevity, longevity differences than others. Again, the turf fibers, there's, there's a multitude of fibers as well. If you're having a fiber failure issue, you know, there, there's a multitude of fibers that can be looked at. Some have long, long history of the workhorse dark fiber, maybe not as, you know, as, as visually appealing. And then there's, there's fibers that are more visually appealing, but they're, they're, they may not be as, as, as a, as, as, as I would say, a workhorse option where they may wear out quicker. But again, almost every turf has an eight year warranty. And if you get excessive wear just from normal play and not, you know, the, the mashing of a goal area with the goalie's cleats and, and face off Xs and things of that nature. Though, those would be covered under that warranty up to that eight years. Obviously beyond the eight years, y'all, that eight to 12, that four year timeframe, you are on your own from that perspective when it, when it comes to the, any sort of failure that happens on the turf.
And not to, I mean, not to belabor the issue and not to, I know that there's other people waiting to talk. So I'll just, my last question would be, you know, we've talked, and you've mentioned before, Jonathan, thank you very much for providing all this information. It's very helpful. Is the, for the replacement of the artificial turf, you know, and you said that you could build it in. How much is that though? I mean, if we're talking, say, a, for a lacrosse crease, that, that's, that's playing lacrosse. I know that's a pretty large circle. And if you have like the corner kick areas or other things like that, or even say football, you know, you're running down the middle, that's, you know, that's, that's a lot of areas that if we were going to have to replace that, how much, just going on lacrosse crease, how much would that be just for that section alone?
I, I mean, there, I, I would say that y'all lacrosse crease is going to be anywhere from 2,500 to 5,000 bucks for material cost. It is, but it, it's not typical that you're going to get a wear line from football on a synthetic turf within the, you know, within the warranty period and or the lifespan of the turf. It may get matted down a little bit, but with regular grooming, as Scott indicates, he does on a monthly basis, which is fantastic. I can't tell you how many schools I go to and they do it once every six months, which, you know, has voided warranty issues and things of that nature. So keeping your, you know, making sure your G max is tested on a regular basis, making sure that you're, you know, it sounds like you do a disinfection process. I mean, those are all great things to, to keep the life of the turf going. But those high wear areas, they have a cost. And whether that's 2,500 bucks, 5,000 bucks, 8,000 bucks, it's, there is a cost associated with having those spare parts to make it, to, to make it viable. But what we say kind of a, a lot of times, a synthetic turf field acts as five grass fields. So from a usage perspective. So if you, if you are, you know, if you're going to, you know, use your synthetic field, but the way it sounds, you use your synthetic field, you know, you need five grass fields to be able to rotate people around to make sure your grass fields don't get destroyed. So just, I, I just keep that in mind as well.
Okay. All right. But just so, just, I mean, just so I understand, so then you're talking just for, for example, that crease, you're talking 2,500 to possibly 8,000, depending upon all the circumstances and everything else. And that's, is that just? Now is that including the labor for insulation or is that on top of it? Or is that, you know? And I'm sorry, I'm being, I'm being very granular, but I need, this is granular. This, we need to understand this. So.
Sure, sure. And, you know, the, the 2,500, 8,000 is likely going to include that, that labor. But again, that's labor four years from now, labor eight years from now, labor 10 years from now, 12 years from now. So you're, it, it's hard to predict what labor is. I mean, we just went through COVID, we went through crazy inflation, you know, and we went through crazy price increases. So it's, it's hard to predict what the labor is. We can somewhat predict the material and we can't really predict that well anymore just based on what it is. But I know that if you're going to buy the materials during the, during the install, you know that you have the materials on site and you paid a dollar for it. Now you have to, you know, you'd have to have enough money to have that installed. And like I said, it is fairly easy if it's planned for in the design. You know, through, it's, it's like a, a super duty Velcro system. They pull it out, put it in, redo the infill and groom it back out in a day or so, you're done.
Okay, Roger. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luba. Counselor DeCham followed by Counselor Belushi.
Thank you. I have a few questions. Lisa, the original bond of the $300,000, do you know how long we bonded that for?
It was 10 years.
It was bonded for 10 years? Okay. So if we had received the payment that the town was promised to receive with the 89,000 coming from the sports teams, 105 from Talon Athletics, and then the 42,000 from rentals, it would have only been a cost to the town of $64,000, right? But currently we only have $89,000 that we received.
Sorry. I think it was around 89, but then we have received, we will be receiving a little bit as well.
Well, I guess my, my point here is if we're looking at the next field being at $850,000, if we continue to get the money from the sports organizations, we're looking at a max of about $150,000 payment from them, which means a net $700,000 from the town to replace the field. And that doesn't cost, that's just the field and none of the other stuff. And that would be a 10 year bond also, correct?
Right. And the, and the thing is, you know, once we get our grants person on board, hire somebody, the hope would be to see if there's any grants out there as well to help offset the cost of debt would be. But currently we're just showing it as debt until we can find, see if there's anything out there. Last time we got a couple of different grants, but we don't know right now what's available out there.
Okay. In, in regards to the, the field, I think Mr. Luba hit on one of the things that I was going to say. I've talked to a few coaches that have been down on the field and walked in that. And I know the main areas of where are the lines. So is there a repair option for us? Cause right now that went in 2013, 14 years is 2027 for a replacement. 12 years gives us the 2025 for a replacement. So that still pushes us out. But if we were able to repair the lines, that would get us for the use of the field before we would have to start, before we would have to start paying to replace it.
I think I'd like to defer to Scott and possibly Bruce as well. If like, I know there are some photos in your past of the lines. But Scott, can you please address that?
Yeah, we went back in early spring, I believe it was, Bruce Watt and our former town manager, Mike Rosen, and I walked that, that field. There were some spots where I believe it was like a yellow colored striping was actually, it looked as though it was coming unsown from the field. But there were, there were other areas that were off the beaten path, if you want to call it, that, that seemed as though they had holes starting to wear on them. And I don't know whether that's from just the kids warming up in the same spot all the time, but it, it just seems strange that it was kind of off to the side of the, the field of play. I know Bruce is on. Bruce, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I would, I would definitely have to agree with what you were saying. You know, it just wasn't just some of the seams on those lines. There were some areas where it looked like there's a, almost like an impression like Scott was saying of, and areas where I, where I've seen warmups going on there. So it very well could have been what Scott was saying.
I guess same question though, is there a repair option that would get us through the 14 years rather than looking at replacing a million dollar field in two years?
I would, I would say the repair option Tammy is probably what John was talking about, having somebody come in, cut out the area, the affected area, put the, the Velcro backing on, if you will, around the, the perimeter of the area and then fit a piece in. Unfortunately, it's going to look like patchwork because it, it's not material that was purchased at the same time and hasn't been exposed to the same amount of sunlight and what have you. And depending on, you know, I know we don't want it to look like we're, you know, a, a backwards town, if you will, but that's, that's the, that's basically what it's going to come out as. Because again, it's going to be a completely different color green for the field. But it can be, it's, there were some areas that were safety concerns that should be addressed. And, you know, they weren't that big of an area. I mean, some of the ones I saw were probably two by two, three by three, which I don't think would, would carry a huge price tag to them. But it's, going forward, if this synthetic field does come to fruition, then I would think the, the best option would be as John had recommended and have, you know, spare sections already, already figured right into the, the whole equation.
I'm not too concerned with looking, keeping up with the Joneses, if Joneses on the block, if we can have a few thousand dollars and do some repairs, a little discolored green when you're running on it, doesn't seem like a bad, a bad hit.
No, I agree.
Tammy, this is Pete. I just want to piggyback on what, what Scott said. I, I was present for that walk as well. And we have fixed a couple of areas by sewing in some, some of the lines that have pulled up, especially the red line and yellow line, line, line sections. That's, that's been done a couple of times in my, my six years here. But the, the other thing that we were concerned about was the overall fiber height. And that fiber height is really what holds your process underneath the rubber pellets from basically, you know, spreading around in, in a fashion that's going to create these dead spots, which affects your GMACs in various areas. So we are concerned about overall fiber thickness that's on that field now, which I think is, is a bigger concern than fixing a few sections because we can only groom that field so much and spread the rubber around. And it's only going to be held in place by the depth of our fiber. Okay. So, and it's not that the fact the fiber is compressed. And I've seen plenty of fields where the fiber is literally flattened so that it almost looks like, like a wet dog or something like that, where, where the fiber is laying flat. We don't have that issue on this type of field, but that fiber thickness is thinning. So there's not a lot we could do about that when it becomes a significant percentage of the square footage of that field, which we looked at a lot of different areas. And yeah, the fiber did vary a little bit, but it was never long in any of the areas at all. So we are kind of seeing some even wear. And some of the things that Bruce Watt mentioned could be related to, you know, various pieces of equipment being put on the field. A tackling dummy that's always put in the same location for football, you know, weeks on end. Okay. Or soccer bringing the goals to the middle of the field. Or, you know, the water cooler being put in the same place every single time. Okay? Turf fields are, turf fields are intended, like any field, to have spread, you know, not have pieces of equipment just dumped in the same spot every time. So I, I think that's the, the biggest concern is, is, is that fiber height. So a repair option might buy us a little time, but you're, you're not going to pick up more than a couple of years at the most because that fiber height is, is thinning. And that will affect the GMACs, which is the biggest concern because then we're going to get more and more kids getting injured out there for things that could, that could be avoided.
Thank you. I would think a couple of years could give us some more time to kind of come up with a payment model on this. There were a couple of other things that you had mentioned in, when you were talking that I just wanted to go over. So I don't know any other high schools that have a, just a dedicated, like one field, like their turf fields are all multi-use. You know, typically turf fields are multi-use. They're definitely preferential from a playing perspective because they can be, you don't have to worry about the wear and tear of football running up and down the yellow line, which is onside the white line for soccer and everything else. But I wouldn't think that it being multi-use is causing it to wear it anymore because I think that's how they're, they're set up to be. And in regards to the water, we went back to a sod field or a turf, a grass field. There was a grass field prior to the turf field. So I would assume the infrastructure would be there to support water. If, if we had a grass field there prior to 2013, the first, I think, what, four or five years that the high school was open, it was grass. So I would assume the infrastructure would be there. Would that be accurate?
My understanding, they, they had to rip all of that infrastructure that was there before up to put in the new turf field. But Scott, do you have the background?
I don't mean like the field. I mean the water pipes. We mentioned the water pipes and that. So the water pipes would come.
Here, Scott, do you have the background on what we have?
The only thing I can offer is I know that the, the drainage is there. I'm not sure what is there as far as infrastructure goes for irrigation because obviously with a synthetic turf field, you don't need any irrigation. I know when, when my son played there, he played on grass field to start with. And I remember the condition of that field, there were a lot of wear spots. It would, again, there was no alternative field to play on. It, the, uh, you know, the town did the best they could keeping up with it. But when, you know, anybody who's watched lacrosse or soccer or football game know that the, uh, the grass surface takes a fair amount of abuse. I, I really, that was, you know, quite a few years ago. He was in, uh, he was in high school, I think, the first year that it actually opened. So it was quite a few years ago. But I do remember seeing a lot of bare spots out in the field.
Um, Scott, my next question is for you. When you gave the estimates of two people full time, can you tell me which field you were comparing that to, up with those estimates?
That's based on, um, us going out there, mowing that at least once a week to keep the grass at the right heights, uh, um, so that, you know, believe it or not, we have, uh, we have people in town, you know, a lot of coaches in town who say they really like to see the ball fields at an inch and a half high. So when the kids hit a ball, it doesn't, doesn't drag in the grass. And, um, so we would probably have to keep that between an inch and three quarters to two inches. That's mowing it once a week. Then if the grass gets away from us, we have to go out there and blow the grass off so that we don't have any clumps out there. Then it's laying out the field. If we, if we do it every week where we can still see the existing lines, it's much easier for us. If we have a, a period of rain, let's just say for, uh, three or four days, and we go out and we mow it and we lose them, then we have to start pulling all new strings. That's two people out there, um, relaying out the field, depending on what sport it is, and it could be two different sports. These are, these are estimates because we haven't, uh, we, it's been years, nobody, uh, since I've been here, that field has been, uh, synthetic turf.
We're not doing that at any other current field right now to know exactly.
Not, not to that extent, no, not for, uh.
Okay, and then, uh, Lisa, I guess my last question would be, if, if this, if we're saying this is gonna take two people a day and $40,000, and that when we put this turf field in, did we, did we reduce staff? Or did we see a reduction in overtime or anything like that to show where we recaptured the savings?
We, um, back, back then, I know we did reduce some staff in public works. And Scott, I don't know, you probably weren't here back then. But there have been some reductions in public works over the years. Um, I'm not sure if it was directly related to that because Steve was so involved in this. Steve, previous town manager, were like in, in, uh, developing what he did with the whole turf. He, he made all the deals with it. So I couldn't tell you exactly how much was reduced, but I know we have lost staff in that area. Certainly there was overtime, a lot of overtime for a variety of things, which Scott has just kept that minimal over the years and hasn't added much to it.
Lisa, I also wanted to, uh, point, point out, uh, since Scott and I have both been in Tallinn, and it's about the same time. We've both been here for six years now. You know, there, there have been losses on the public work side. But even to the tune, I think of maybe ten to fourteen, fifteen years ago, the Board of Ed used to have groundskeepers that were on their budget, that were dedicated people that helped to maintain the Board of Ed ground. Uh, we no longer have those, those folks. Uh, they were moved over to the, either the public work side or just lost through, uh, attrition over time. And, um, you know, Scott would have to look at his staff and have dedic- that dedicated people to actually do this every single week. And, um, so when we look at the cost to transition from a synthetic surface to, to a natural surface, uh, those, those soft costs or those, uh, those, you know, additional costs are gonna have to be looked at because, uh, we don't have any dedicated folks on the Board of Ed side. Uh, we have a two-person maintenance crew, uh, you have custodians. And we're not, uh, we don't have any of the, uh, equipment to maintain that. So, uh, that's another thing that, uh, folks don't, uh, you know, may, may, may not have known is, is that, uh, is the loss of the groundskeepers on the, uh, Board of Ed side.
Thank you, Peter.
So my last concern on this is just, it's just the bonding, it's just the money of it. You know, by the time we're done with this first ten years and the, and the additional costs that we're saying, you're looking at costs of over $90,000 plus method, we lose the interest, which you and I know that's what, about thirty-four percent compounded over the ten years, depending on how much we have to pay back. We're looking at over ninety-something thousand dollars a year. Uh, that's gonna hit the taxpayer for this. So, um, I'm interested in any options that are on the board for savings that are out there, E R F money or end-of-year savings or anything else to offset the cost of the field. So we're not hitting taxpayers for a hundred thousand dollars a year in perpetuity because a ten-year bond, replace it again, ten-year bond, replace it again. We're talking about a hundred thousand dollars a year to taxpayers for this. My frustration is I was here when all this went in. I voted on it when this came in, I was here. And this field was sold to the people of Tallinn as it wasn't gonna cost the taxpayers money. It was going to be paid for by the Athletic Association, the funds, and this grand scheme of renting it out. And it was not gonna be a cost to taxpayers. Now here it is, we're not even at ten years yet, and we're talking about replacing a million dollar field. So that's why I'm asking about repair options to at least get us to the ten, which is ten to fifteen. And what can we do to reduce this, this hit to the taxpayers going forward? Because it's a hundred thousand dollars a year, it's a lot of money.
I, I agree with you. As far as the hit, the only thing I could say is, you know, looking for grants, to see if there's any grants out there. The, the other side of it is, you know, if you're still budgeting to replace over years, it's still gonna have to be money put aside each year. So it would be the differential between what it would cost you annually with increased service costs. I'm just trying to remember, I'll say it's forty, fifty thousand dollars for increased staff to, or equipment and such each year to maintain a grass field. And it's a hundred thousand, so you're now you're looking at another fifty thousand. Over and beyond that, you would, I would be recommending you put something aside each year so we're not having to experience the cost of interest in issuing debt. But again, um, I think grants play a role of this as well. As far as renting out the field, the, the problem that we've run into is that the majority of the use is with the Board of Education first, you know, for, for their programs. That, that's the number one use. Then we have the athletic leagues who do pay their fair share, and they've been very good with making their payments each year. They take up the next section of time, which leaves very little other open time to be able to rent that field out. And, um, then, you know, you have places like UConn, you know, creating their own new fields where we were for a while renting out the field to them, to share with them. You know, a lot of those opportunities aren't there. We tried to sell some advertising on the signs that generated some money. And any type of money that we were able to get from any sort of rentals, after paying for the expenses of managing the field, what we would need for potty sticks of that sort, that all got applied to the debt to ease, you know, the impact of it having to hit the general fund budget. So there really, there was very little, as it was. So, you know, there's not that many other revenue opportunities here. So, you know, it's a choice on, on what the citizens would want. And if they're willing to pay for, if they want an artificial turf, then they have to understand what it would cost to continue that turf. If, if the choice is to do a grass field, then they have to understand there's gonna be times that they just won't be able to use the field. There's trade-off either way.
Thank you, Councilor D. Chair, Councilor Felusi followed by Jacob.
Thank you, Brenda Felusi here. I say we have some excellent problems in this town. If we have so many kids participating in so many sports that they're having trouble finding space, that we're wearing out our fields, um, I think it's an, eh, an excellent problem to have in a way. To have all these kids so active, I'm thrilled for it. And it's not just the student athletes, it's the families that are involved. So, um, I think this is a wonderful service that we provide for our community, both the school and the community at large. I think that this, you know, we're talking so much about, do we need, we, we don't know what this, what the residents want. Well, by the enrollment in all of these different types of sports, I think it's pretty clear that the, we can see that they want these fields. They want to be able to participate in these sports. And just goes to show, we really need a strategic plan that would have the community needs assessments involved so that we would know these.
Just move yourself, Councilor Felusi, may I have a key punch here and there?
Yeah, I saw that come up, thank you. So, um, I, I just, we talked, a, a lot of my questions were answered, but we didn't talk about snow too much. There was a little bit of information about, um, how to do snow removal on, in, um, an artificial turf, you know, basically plastic shovels. But we didn't talk about what the impacts of snow were to grass. And if there's more information to add about snow removal for artificial turf that wasn't in the packet, that would be great so that we could do a comparison there. We've had multiple inches of snow as early as the middle of October and as late as mid-April. And there are sports that are played in those, um, those months, of course. So if somebody can, you know, give us a little bit of insight on the impact of snow on grass and turf and what the pros and cons are of each, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I can, I can chat about snow removal on, on synthetic turf. It, it obviously can be done. Um, it has to be done, you know, carefully. Um, there is equipment that, that can do that beyond a shovel. Um, there are, you know, uh, you know, working with the specific manufacturer and identifying equipment and/or the, the guides that need to be on the equipment to not affect the turf, not making very sharp turns with your equipment on the turf so that you tear the, the fabric. Uh, you know, there are snow plows that basically have a PVC pipe on the blade to not affect the turf. Once the turf is, is visible to the sun, it doesn't take long for it to melt off. It doesn't mean that it won't be hard. Because, you know, it, it's still water and sand and rubber. And, um, you know, you can get water in the stone and it can freeze pretty hard, you know, pretty readily from that perspective. So it is possible, it has to be done carefully and it has to be done with the correct equipment on, to maintain your warranty. As it relates to grass, snow on grass, that's exactly what it is, just like your front yard. When it, uh, when it snows, covers up the grass. And then when it melts, you can play on the grass again. But, uh, unless you have boots on, um, you're not gonna plow your grass field or remove the snow from your grass field. Uh, it would, it would definitely damage that field, uh, from that perspective. Yeah, I don't know, Scott, if you have anything further on that, but that's, that's our take.
No, in, uh, my experience, uh, watching, um, watching my youngest son play lacrosse, they did have different times where every kid was handed a plastic shovel and they started from one sideline and went to the other. But, uh, when it came time to, yeah, when it came time to using a, uh, a, a plow, they were, that was very rare. And I can speak from experience, when you try, do try to plow off grass, there are gonna be high spots in the grass where all of a sudden it's a dirt spot, it's no longer grass. And, uh, you know, there, there's virtually nothing you can do to control that.
Yeah, and I, and I will add on the synthetic turf side of plowing and or snow blowing, you will remove rubber and sand in that scenario as well. And it will pile up where the snow piles up. And when the snow melts, all that needs to be dragged back into the field and, and room back in. So there is some, some maintenance as well, I didn't mention that, I apologize.
I guess a follow-up on that, and maybe, I, I don't know that we have any coaches on here or anything. I, I assume most, most sports still do play if there is a snow-covered field. Is there any, I, I assume baseball wouldn't, but I don't know. Is there any drawbacks to playing? Does it increase the wear and tear, obviously, and I believe on grass it would. But does it increase the wear and tear playing on a snow-covered field for the synthetic?
Anytime you play on a plastic fiber, that's, you know what I mean? That's gonna be in cold weather, in snow, I'm just like plowing it. It's not, it's not, it's something that can be done, it's something that can be done and not void your warranty, but it, but it does wear on your turf from that perspective. Almost every university plows their field, um, because they have to. Lacrosse starts February ninth. Um, and they have to plow their fields if you're gonna play lacrosse in the Northeast. So, um, so they're plowing or snow blowing their fields, um, from, you know, Maine to Virginia, um, to, to be able to, to be able to play that sport. Uh, obviously during the football season, you can get a, you can get a spit of snow and they'll typically play on it, not necessarily needs to be plowed. But in early February, there's fields that are snow-covered. And a lot of, a lot of universities will actually plow that field even though they're not playing on it because it becomes very difficult to remove that snow in February, um, as opposed to doing it as it snows. So they'll actually plow those fields all year long, even though potentially people aren't playing on it.
Thank you, I appreciate all that input.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilor Felusi, Jacob?
Thank you, I've got a couple of comments to the question. So first, I completely agree with Tammy and, uh, this Hancock that whatever we do, we should be putting money away for future replacement cycles. I hope whatever agreement that we come up with for this field includes those terms for future replacement cycles. And it should be as much cash on hand versus bonded. In terms of grants, I know you've mentioned that. Is there, I know we don't have a grant writer, we're still looking for that, but you feel that there's a very good chance we could get some grants, or is this more?
At this point, I don't know what's out there. So there, there could be, um, the outdoor recreational, uh, program with the state, but I'm not sure if they have any, anything that they're funding. I'm not sure. Bruce, would you have any information on any recreation grants that might be available?
I'm, I'm not quite sure, but I have no problem reaching out to the, um, Connecticut Recreation Parks Association to see if, um, our executive director knows anything that is, uh, currently available or if she knows of anything that, uh, may be upcoming in the near future.
That would be helpful if you could. I, I think in the class there would be the, the outdoor recreation program, it's called. But right now, I'm not aware of that, certainly haven't had time to be able to try to.
I just think it'd be useful to figure out exactly how much of a chunk you could count on if we decided to go down the route of keeping a turf field. The second question is, uh, if we were, if we do decide to keep the turf field, would we be able to put any money towards that field out of pocket? Would we have to do the entire thing?
Currently, it, we probably would have to bond it. You, you wanna put it over the life of the asset, too. And bonding right now, the rates are lower than, you know, we're saying. It certainly would be a least purchase also. But, um, with our, our general fund balance, we, we have to keep that at a certain level. And we do use some of those funds each year to set the mill rate. But it's not too much of a big burden on the taxpayers. Try to relieve some of the burdens, better way to say it. So we, we would certainly have to look to see where our fund balance is, if, if that's an option. We've got some major hits coming with our capital, helping the future. The increase on the, the debt for the. The, the increase on the, the debt for the water pollution control plant, things like that. A lot of that's taking up a lot of what the general fund tax dollars would put into, to funding that. So uh, we, we can look at it. But right now there's so many other things that are pressing and having to keep our, our rating. And we want to keep that AAA rating with the amount of debt that we have forthcoming in the next four to five years is close to about eighteen million, twenty million dollars. Um, you know, it's imperative to keep that, that bond rating in AAA, keep the lower interest cost.
And it's, it's a concern, you know, I don't, luckily I said it's not a horrible time to be borrowing money, but it's, it just doesn't feel like a great option to give to a lifespan field.
Sure. And like I, like I mentioned earlier, um, one of the scenarios includes input at a shorter time span. Most of our bonds go for fifteen to twenty years, depending on the length of the asset. And that one is a shorter amortization period. So it certainly has an higher impact on debt as well, but less interest costs.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jacob. Uh, Jennifer, and then I actually had a couple of questions after you.
Yeah, my question was for Mr. Saba. You mentioned the concern for increased injuries if we extended the length of the current field for too long. I was wondering if you could expand on that. Peter? Are you still there, Peter Sutava?
Jennifer, I want to ask my question, then go back to you. Peter, oh, there he is.
Sorry, guys. Can you repeat that uh, question though, please?
I think the concern for increased injuries if we extended the lifespan of the field too long or with patching. I was wondering if you could expand on that. That's a concern for me for students.
So Lou, Lou or Brenda, do you guys mind uh, repeating her a question? Because I just could not hear, hear her because I'm uh, driving.
She wants to know if there's any uh, increase in sport. She's concerned about your comment regarding the uh, increase, possible increase in sports industry and injuries. If we do uh, any caches or anything like that. Did you hear that?
Yeah, so um, patches themselves um are typically used uh, more so for, I mean, obviously tears mostly uh, that become tripping hazards and so on. Um, that's the biggest concern is uh, looking for uh, tears and sections of the field that actually end up pooling up or, or they start rolling or bunching. Uh, tho- those are actually physical tripping hazards. Uh, what I was kind of talking about was uh, the overall um, rating of the field in regards to the fibers, the capacity to hold the rubber process on, under deep, which is really where you get your Gmax ratings from. So as the fiber thins out, it, it actually becomes more like the miracle field in, in a way where you have more of a, a synthetic turf with uneven base or rubber pellets in there, which is going to be your, your biggest risk if, if it starts to cover a large percentage of the field itself. So we have not seen any sort of, of, of stats from kids being injured more so this year versus a couple of years ago. Uh, the other thing is too, the lifespan of our field in essence may have been increased slightly just because of COVID. When COVID first came out, a lot of sports were kind of cut, cut down. So we did pick up a little extra time that would have been where. Um, but no, we're, I'm, I'm not seeing anything from a stats uh, per perspective that would lead me to believe that uh, we can't get away with some repairs in some areas, but we still need the plan to replace that field. In reality, I would be surprised if you got another three to four years out of that. And that would be really kind of putting it to, to the very end here, you know? And to the point where, you know, we may have to increase grooming um, because we would have so much displacement the last couple of years that you just have to groom that field a lot more frequently.
Thank you, Jennifer. So I have a couple of questions. For um, probably for Scott. The first would be the tractor that's mentioned in the packet that's used to maintain the field. What is the status of that tractor? Is it used for any other purposes uh, outside of that field maintenance?
No, that's uh, that's its primary function. I mean, obviously if we had another one of our vehicles go down where we needed it, it's uh, available to us, but it's uh, once you get that set up so that it's uh, grooming the way you like it till we try to keep it specifically just at the high school.
Okay. So overall, you would say that it's probably in fairly good condition. So it's not uh, in need of replacement? Or what would you expect the timeline for that? It's a separate procurement for the?
Yeah, that's uh, from, from what I saw, Steve, that, that tractor's probably got, I would say at least another ten years easily because it's, it's, that's primarily all it's been used for and it's kept under shelter up there.
Thank you, Scott. And then I guess as a follow-up, if we were to switch back to a natural brass field, would that then as a result probably expedite or increase the use of your other equipment, which on the capital budget cycle would then require replacements sooner rather than later?
Yeah, what happens is especially out on athletic fields, we try to use a specific mower to um, you know, that we keep. Uh, i- it's not like mowing uh, an open area with um, zero turns and, and what have you. Our, our zero turns are kept in good shape. We use those on our soccer fields like at uh, uh, cross farms or what have you. But when it comes to a, a school like that, um, a lot of times we'll actually cut the grass twice just to keep it, you know, whether it's striping or what have you, so that uh, um, there aren't many clippings on it. And like I mentioned before, if there is clippings, we go out with uh, usually it's a tractor-mounted leaf blower, blow the grass off. And then we start again with the line painting and what have you. But just for uh, um, you know, comparison, the athletic fields that we have in town, when we send one person out, it takes um, typically twenty, twenty-five hours to do one round of paint. That doesn't include that high school field. That high school field by itself, like I say, is going to take probably close to sixteen to eighteen hours for uh, mowing, painting, cleaning, um, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you, Scott. And the last question I could give for Lisa, if we were to explore an avenue of purchasing or hearing any patchwork stuff to extend the life for an additional year or so, what would we use as a, as a expenditure method? We, we would probably get a bond for that. It's only at most eight thousand dollars. Would it just be in general?
No, just be part of our general taxation, general budget, general budget. And.
Okay, thank you. If anyone else has questions, just want to open up to anyone who hasn't spoken yet and then go for a second after Dana.
Thank you for asking, I'm off the machine. I was curious that myself. Um, Lisa, you had mentioned in the beginning, Dana, I don't hear about that. Um, you mentioned in the beginning that we got some initial farms and grants. Um, for that, can you speak to where those came from?
Sure. We got a steep grant from the state of Connecticut, which was about half a million dollars. And then uh, the other grant that I was talking about from uh, D, D Department of Environmental Protection, um, that was another two hundred thousand from them. That was that recreational one. I think that's the one associated with D. So seven hundred thousand alone in grants. We issued three hundred thousand in bonds and um, we also had another seventy thousand dollar grant that got reneged on. Um, it was sort of fraudulently approved. And the town ended up having to come up with thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars out of basic um, other funds that, that we had to allocate towards that. When, when we found out that that grant was not going to be funded, I put an immediate stop to the project regarding any other things that happened to spend with. And um, the total amount needed to complete it at that point without adding anything extra was that thirty-eight thousand.
So, and you said steep, right? Was one of the media ones? Cause um, in looking at, I don't know, but that's used for new constructions and replacement? Yeah, I don't know if it would be allowed for replacement, but this was because it was a new construction situation. Yeah, I don't know if we'd be able to replace with that. Right. And then, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, then, I think it was, I'm not sure who mentioned the annual um, sanitizing of the field, the annual service. What's the cost of that annual service? Scott, do you know the number off the top of your head for that service to sanitize the field?
Yeah, it's approximately forty-five hundred dollars.
Forty, thank you. You think four to five hundred?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Four thousand five hundred or?
Yes, yes, four thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Anyone else? We're going to go around, break stuff. Jacob?
Just a quick one. Doc, um, this is a question for Dr. Willard or maybe Bruce. Do we, do we know a, a trajectory um, for how much usage the field might get over the next ten years? Because I could, I could probably pull up um, or I could ask, you know, the president of Little League, you know, hey, in two thousand and ten we had this many kids. How do, how many do we have in two thousand thirteen, fifteen, uh, seventeen, every, and so on. So do we, do we have an estimate for how much activity that the field's going to get over the next ten years? Or do we not have that type of number?
Well, I mean, I'll let Bruce comment on the, on the town's assignment of, of activities, but the, essentially everything you see in the sports schedule that has to do with that, with that football field. That it's going to be, you know, heretofore, reperitory, how it's going to be used, whether it's a turf field, it's organic or, or. Thank you.
I'll search, Jacob?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. So if anyone else with a first go around, has a chance to speak or ask questions?
I wasn't sure if Bruce was gonna.
Oh, sorry. You want the time to the town?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I can pull that up easily on our um, recreation management system. Um, but you can pretty much guarantee Monday through Friday from approximately six thirty, six, six thirty, um, when we have access to the turf field. Um, until eight thirty, approximately nine o'clock um, from the spring, straight up through fall, really. Um, you're going to have a team on there using it, whether it's talent youth soccer, uh, the lacrosse, um, and or when we're hitting like the, you know, the fall winter season, you got football out there. Um, and then you got your miscellaneous games uh, and or tournaments uh, on the weekends. You know, football will use it in the fall um, approximately for ten to twelve hours on a Sunday for five uh, straight weeks to get their season then at the turf field.
Thank you. Is there anyone for a second round regarding the artificial turf placement projects? Councilor Jacob?
So what is the aim? Like, we're just discussing today.
Yeah, there's no action desire. It's just an ongoing discussion, information gathering, looking for it to the town.
Okay, I'm assuming that's something that could be when we talk about our capital plan that we're going to discuss this more because I'm assuming we would need
Yeah.
info from the board of events to be able to make that decision then.
Yeah, I would absolutely agree to any questions, call back to this meeting to communicate them to the chair and vice chair of the board of that, with the council to then relay to town staff that can provide answers to the full council and board, board of that.
I'm sorry, Steve, could you repeat that? I didn't hear you.
I, I was just saying that this is just a matter of discussion and that if there are any divisional questions regarding the turf field after the discussion's concluded, which want to relay them to the chairs and vice chair of the board of that or council to then pass on to town staff that can provide a response that could then be uh, communicated to the full council and full board of that.
Thank you.
All right.
So we have already submitted our proposed capital budget. Should we amend it or are we going to discuss this? I guess when you uh, discuss your capital budget, I guess and our kind of requests.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I think it's good for now. Unless Lisa didn't have anything to add.
The capital budget for this particular item, for the artificial turf, has been included in on the town side of the capital. So it wasn't in the board of education, but it is in the town. And I think it's two years out. It's not next year's budget, but the budget after that or it's included um, as part of the capital budget.
And when, I'm sorry, I should probably notice, when is the timeline for when you'll be approving the capital budget?
We, I'm going to release it to the town council sometime next week. Um, from my initial capital request going through, um, it could be changed right through, I think it's uh, February tenth is when it will be put out a public uh, public hearing, a public presentation of that particular budget. But the final budget overall is approved, but the overall referendum of the budget in the town council will be forward after they do their deliberations first. And then what goes to the public for the overall goes.
We're looking at the spring that as far as truly, my only concern is I feel like we're kicking the can down another six months, you know, and you know, I think we need a long-term plan um, sooner rather than later. Because I do feel like we've been discussing this now for a year. Not longer. I know kind of COVID timing is maybe confusing, but um, so that's my only concern. I don't know if it's something that the town council can discuss sooner or if it's something that we really won't really have an answer until, let's even say, March, April. Um, because then we really not figured out a plan. And that was, I think, what the board, when we wanted this joint meeting, we wanted to kind of get a plan in place. So that, that's my only concern.
Something interesting. And then this is a point of note, if you do want to see the full schedule section, then it's the finance department's website to the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three budget schedule. Um, so it doesn't go into the capital budget public hearing is on February.
Yeah. So by, by February, we should have a firm decision of where we want to head with the capital. And again, you know, when things deliberate through the budget process and get changed, they get changed, but that'll be what's going forth for the budget.
I'm Christine. And then Jacob, I think, did your question, do you point me out, Christine?
I was pointing at her.
Okay.
I'm like dead center. Maybe you didn't stare at it, please.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Actually, yeah, um, I, I agree with Christine and what she was saying. Um, I was just wondering if it would be of any value for the council, the board, when around and gave their thoughts on it, because I don't know if we'd have another formal opportunity to talk about, you know, preferred grass or turf, that, those thoughts of mine.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if it's for discussion purposes, it's good to get that information for me, for the, for the, if you remember, they have their own thoughts and their recommendations and thoughts from the police's office. But this is generally a no. Get opinions and ideas from everyone. Okay. So yeah, if anyone wants to go around, if they want to, if they have a opinion right now, feel free.
Yeah, I mean, I guess some of what my basic thoughts are. I didn't give about sixty percent of it, but um, I think, again, we should look up the grants um, to get more specific information. Uh, definitely put forward a long-term plan for replacement cycles if we decide to keep the turf field, which I would like if we could do that. Uh, that's where I'm leaning at the moment, although I understand it's a complex decision. Um, and either way, it will affect educational programs and various things like that. Um, and if we can put any money towards paying for it now, that would be preferable. Uh, so I think that's something that is worth researching. Two cents. Thank you, Jacob. If there's any other board of events, chairs that would like to?
If there's any other board events that we'd like to, otherwise you are, but also contact the council. If you know, if you haven't made a firm decision yet, it would be still be more information to take a final decision. It's obviously February that is my state. So it is time to further deliberate, gather information.
I'll go. There's somebody else. I do want to say that even with turning it to the synthetic turf to the natural grass, you're still looking at six hundred and seventy thousand. It's not free to just rip it off and get rid of it. I mean, I was kind of going through this, and I don't know if you just kind of answered your questions though, Tammy? Because it does have an automatic irrigation system. So I'm assuming that they're going to have to put a new one in. It sounds like they're going to have to do a new separate, the stone, the sand base, which, you know, I guess there's different sand base that that uses. The sod and then the football goal goes, which I don't know if that's in there, but it's in there. So, you know, I still look at this and I still say it's not free just to rip it up and turn it into grass. I do think having the synthetic turf for our students, it is a, you know, there are many plus sides to it where all students can use it and do how, one, for at least our community. We have a lot of grass fields and, you know, whether the soccer team can use X, Y, Z, but they can't when it rains. You know, maybe perhaps they can use this field instead. I don't know how the scheduling goes. So I do have to say that with all the sports, talent is a very big sports town. I think that is a consideration when looking at everything. And you're still, like I said, I still see, if you turn it to grass, you're still looking at this, you know, six hundred and seventy thousand. Then you're still talking, it seems like there's more maintenance, whether it's the different paints, which the patches on the field itself that happens, it almost looks like it's like a shad carpet that's on top for the lines. I don't know what you mean. I looked through the pictures that you had posted in there and it just kind of looks like it's on top and however they sew it in. I don't know how the patches would go, if there would be more injuries, if it does pass down or not. Because I like the idea of making it last a little bit longer. I mean, it may not look pretty, but you know, it's it's functional. I just don't know if we patch that area, if that then in turn makes everything else around that patch cave in or go separate ways. I don't, I'm not a turf expert. I don't know. But those are thoughts that I have, you know? If we can make it last longer, that would be great, but is it feasible? It doesn't make sense because less than we do need is having students getting injured. But if we can patch it and they have a little seamless and they just go around and pop it in and mold it in, make it level and everything's fine, then maybe that is something we can consider. Those are all kind of my thoughts through this whole conversation. I think I got everything. I explored a lot. And I do agree with the grants. We need to look at grants. We need to see whatever we can find to get some help. I like the ten year, if we have the bond versus twenty years, because you can't buy them for something that's not fully on. And I don't know if there's a way, this is kind of like a out of the box thinking, but I was looking at this track respray and resurfacing, which is about a hundred and twenty thousand to two hundred and twenty five that we resurfaced. Dr. Willard, when we do the tracks, is there like something along the lines that we can do for these repairs on the actual turf too? Or are they like a separate?
Yeah, I mean, he can speak to that, but my impression is they're separate. They're separate, you know?
But they can't just because they're kind of, when you're reading it and it says that they take it all the way through and then they put a bonding surface and then they put the rubberized liquid on top with the five to eight, with the thickness and sprinkle rubberize. I mean, I know that's different than the turf, but is that a way that we can repair with the patches somehow like?
Yeah, my impression, because the track and that is for that track running versus the field is for that sports with the cleats and so on. It's a little bit, it's just different. That's my question.
Okay, so.
I'm sure people come into that more, but that's my impression is it's a it's a different process. So I mean, there may be some dovetailing, looping projects together, but that is, those are two separate types of expenses.
And I will say that our student representatives didn't speak at our last meeting and they were very proud of people in the turf. They say that the gym classes use it, the students get to go outside. It's a, only I mean, and have to get in. So that was a part of it. Um, that's it.
I appreciate you.
Christina, your name is up. I got two quick things, all on board with grants. Second thing is taking the numbers out of it. In spring, I'm in an interesting situation here as a Little League coach. And when, you know, it rains overnight, you walk, you expect the next day, hey, I can go to the field with three coaches, fix up the field and we can play. For about, I don't know, sixty by sixty by sixty, whatever the math is there, that's for the infield. It is not easy to replace or fix the outfield necessarily because there's no, we don't have grass patches. We don't have this, we don't have that. And so taking, again, taking the numbers out of it, just solely, you'd be like turf or you'd be like dirt more. Turf is definitely my preference as a board member, but as also a coach. Just because it is a lot less work for volunteers, it's a lot less work for those. It's a lot less on their, that's their plate, we're already contracted to the town of Tom. So just taking the numbers out of it, again, I am on board with turf. But grants, I'm all on board with grants. Yes.
I'm sure I can say a few things, thinking about the turf field in general. Like, I wasn't around when it was voted on, or if I was, if I wasn't paying attention. It might not have been something I would have voted yes on putting in, knowing the financial consequences. But since it's here, you know, I'm also a big fan of taking, you know, taking care of our things, you know? You know, and prolonging their life. And it's apparent that the board does use this turf field an awful lot. And I know it's not for part of the board budget, but if our students feel strongly and we feel strongly, I feel like the board could contribute something to support the cost. And I speak as a member, as a member of the board and not for the whole board, but those are just my thoughts.
Thank you, Christina, Jennifer, and then Sophia.
I just wanted to say, it does look like Steve Grant can be used for expansion, renovation or replacement. That's good news. And then to what Ashley was saying about the rain, you know, I can speak from just my own personal time with my boys playing football. That's exactly what happened. When it rained, everybody knew where to to the high school field and they packed this together so that they didn't lose that practice time. And I think once we even move one of the championship games from another town to back to ours so that they could actually have that game because they were able to use the turf field and they weren't able to use the other field. And then I guess I would say that, yes, I I agree. I think that we should definitely use the the turf field if we can, and we should definitely pursue grants. And we do think that we should pursue grants before we talk about taking any overhead ones away, especially anything that would be, you know, COVID related, anything that would do lots of learning, right? Get damage issues or so on.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I just wanted to add that I think this this artificial turf field also adds value to our town. Our town is more marketable and has a nicer field. People may move to our town just knowing about our athletic program. Additionally, I think what's more important here is what we're not talking about and that the plan for the funding of the artificial field or if we go sod is not being talked about. And we need, we need to plan for the future proactively so our predecessors aren't faced with this at all.
Thank you, Sophia. And actually, that just makes sense for another thing for Lisa possibly want to work with Bruce. It might be worthwhile since we had similar stakeholder input for the potential miracle field that's also being discussed. That we may want to work with some of those teams outside of the board of that and the town to get their input on. Their preference submitted to the council and those to the board of that. So we got a holistic picture of how many stakeholders really appreciate the the artificial field compared to a natural grass field. Is there anyone else for a second round of discussion questions?
Ask her. I have no trouble with this too. So I know Mr. Weaver mentioned about something a lot. I actually, how many times, what I've read, we've only really had to go back and fix it. We never use the warranty. Like, is it something that we just want to ignore? Is it something I was even concerned if we had officially fixed it, that that wasn't possible? Is that something that we have a warranty to do whatever it is?
I'll let Scott address that, but I think we only had one warranty thing the whole time. And and it was covered under the warranty.
So it's not something that happens often.
But Scott, have you had any other major repairs that you had to do to that field?
No, I I believe you're correct. We had one warranty issue. We did have a small one a couple of years ago and our operations manager reached out to the contractor. It was some, an area around the drainage was lifting and they came in and they made the repair under warranty. But we really haven't had anything in the six year, other than that, in the six years that I've been here.
And then, what would it take to put either in the grass field or turf field? You know, how long would it take? Like, if you redo the grass, the grass field versus a turf field, how long would it take to redo? Like, I would assume it would take away time from sports.
Certainly. Jonathan, do you have, could you respond to that? The question was, how long would it take to do, you know, to convert it to a grass field? And how long would it take to put a turf field replacement in? How much time does it take away from the use of those fields, of the field?
Sure, sure. So I, you could replace the synthetic turf in 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 probably six weeks. I, you know, depending on when you procure the material, things of that nature. So you procure the material well in advance of them actually mobilizing to the site, demo, demoing the existing turf and then installing the new. They will have to, you know, regrade the base slightly to make things flat again and graded properly for for the specific use. The grass field is probably going to take, between the demolition and the and the rebuilding of that is going to probably take three months, may take a little bit longer. But what's the time is going to be and what grass service do you choose? Sod is going to take six weeks before you can even think about starting to play on it, making sure that it roots in and is healthy. If you seed it, you'll probably lose a year to make sure that it's a, that it, that it comes in well and is healthy before you start trampling it down right away. So there, there's definitely multiple timelines, but the synthetic turf, being that your base and drainage is already installed, your base would need to be cleaned up slightly. And, you know, the turf is like putting carpet down. They'll typically install the turf within with about three weeks. So there's some time for demo, some time for cleaning up the base and then installation of it.
Just to, I will just to add, the, in my history, when you plant a grass field, the first year, yes, it looks nice, but it doesn't have the resiliency to it that it would have after a year and a half to two years. You start playing on it, it's when it's real immature, those those roots are going to rip out of the the soil pretty quick.
For sure. And and it's very weather dependent from that perspective of a very wet summer is going to take long, longer for the grass, very hot summer. There, it's definitely weather dependent on how long it's going to take the root in and be playable. For sure, Scott. Good point.
I'm definitely with many others about applying for the grants. I think that's an obvious thing to do. I'm just concerned why hasn't there been any planning for the future of this turf already? Or grass? Are we saying we haven't planned for what's happened right now before?
No, we we have had it in the capital plan for the past year or two regarding the replacements, slowly moving up in the year to be addressed. So they've passed them in there. Regarding grants, it all depends on what grant you're going for and, you know, how quickly it can be used, things like that. There's usually timing. Yeah, sometimes you, it it all depends on the grant. But sometimes you have to have a shovel ready project to be able to request a grant. Very similar with to like school construction grants, you have to have the appropriation approved and any bonding approved prior to being able to request a school construction grant. So it all depends on what kind of grants are out there. My goal was to to get it in the process if this is what is desired and to try to find whatever grants we could get.
Yeah, I know you mentioned the capital, but I think the county can see it soon. When we get a, we've seen an idea of how much. The town is thinking about what it towards, what are these suggestions? Like, do we have two hundred thousand set aside for the turf? Any, like, I just wonder, because I know the board, if you're on board, you kind of want an idea, leave us an even tonight, like, how people are feeling, what are options that out there, or the town could help. Currently, we're going to work together.
Currently, there are no funds set aside like at a reserve, you know, a cash reserve. We have eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the capital plan, which currently is identified as bond funding over a ten year life. That could very well change, like I said, it's two years out. That could change if we're able to secure some grants for it. Again, it's got to be a project that's officially approved. And usually, even though you have a five year plan, year one is the year that really gets appropriated in the budget and and moves forward. Years two through five can change. So it's a little tricky trying to apply for a grant right now for something that's two years out. Needs to be shovel ready for grants.
I don't know, I mean, warrants, not official turf, it makes sense. I mean, why would we go back in time? I know it costs a lot of money, but listen to experts that have been telling us, it seems like they even lean a little bit towards turf. I mean, I would think you have to pass money upfront, but I would think you would save a little bit of money on the other side. Plus, we have short staff, so that would start a lot more work on our staff as well. I think.
Thank you. That's your check.
So I just wanted to say that I also in support of figuring out a way to fund this. And I think the reason why I'm not sure if I'm a board member of Colin, if you even know that. Reason why I think this whole thing came about is because in our field duty agreement, which we had to sign back in June, it says, we're in the decision, the town of Tom will work collaboratively to come up with a funding method for the turf field replacement. So that's why we were bringing this to the council now to try to start that collaboration. So I'm just hoping that, like, like you said, we'd like to leave here, we're going on something, but. Right, I do think that, yeah, that's kind of what the purpose was of the joint meeting. So I think the sooner we can figure out that collaboration, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina? Something else in the jail?
Somewhere in here, I can't find it. There was something about a sinking fund. Is that where the eighty nine thousand is?
Eighty nine thousand has basically been used to offset the cost of the debt.
Okay, so that's.
So that money's gone.
So is there a sinking fund that, okay. Can we start the sinking fund?
We have money to put into it that one.
All right, well, that's my portion of the meeting.
Thank you. That's Rachel.
So in reference to what you two were just saying there, you can't do a sinking fund if we're paying a hundred thousand dollars a year. Because then you're looking at a hundred thousand dollars a year plus another hundred thousand dollars a year put in as a sinking fund to be able to fund the next one. This is the same conversation that we're having with the miracle field is when, you know, how you replace it. So if we want to look at putting some kind of plan forward to put some kind of money in the sinking fund, the only way to do that is find a way to fund this field upfront. But then you fund it and then you start saving for the next field. You're you're funding one and you're saving for the next ten years. And the only way that we're going to be able to do that is, as you mentioned, finding some sort of way to collaboratively look between the two boards. And I bring up the ERF fund because the ERF fund is specifically for capital improvements, transportation and special education.
And I believe after the money that goes in there, we're looking at, there're gonna be almost a million dollars in there, just this year alone, not counting what's gonna go in the next two years. So in that line, if we're looking at finding a collaborative way, we need to figure out how much money there is set aside anywhere between your fund and the other fund to be able to fund an $850,000 field. That's ultimately what we need to do if you wanna start a sinking fund, because then we fund the first field and we start putting the $15,000 that we get every year from the sports agencies, which is $150,000, that goes into the sinking fund, any rental fees that Bruce manages to get at Linn and IR, that goes into the sinking fund. And then we look at how we're gonna fund it going forward with pay as cash and not funding. That also, just for frame of reference for everybody, saves us about a 34% compound interest of a million dollars over 10 years. So you're saving about $330,000 by finding ways to fund this now. So ultimately, I think, we can't decide that now, but the conversation needs to be, how much money do you guys have? How much money do we have? And how do we fund an $850,000 field with cash out the door? So that's where I would suggest the next meeting goes, whether it goes back to the board and you guys talk about it in finance and we talk about it at the town council, to look for a matching on each side, unless you guys know of something that's coming up for the ERF fund that you're gonna need a million dollars for, between capital, transportation and special ed. It's a capital project. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jenna. I don't know, Dr. Willis, you want your response, let's get your hand raised for a moment.
That's just technology.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not transportation.
It's like the other two are 66%.
Technology, yes.
But I mean, you know, I would, I would caution against future reliance on structures like the ERF for funding staying perpetuity. I think the town has to look at its long-term planning and, and what it actually wants to do with fields like this. Because these artificial fields, you know, you started with the one high school, the miracle field is coming on the radar, that's also on school grounds. So at, at what point is that going to be something that every 10 years, you know, there's the same conversation and, and, you know, and it's turned towards that, that can be up to 1.4 million now? We'll also be asking for roofs and things like that. You know, we can run school without an artificial field, but we can't run it without a roof. So, you know, we just have to, you know, look at, the town, I think, we'd wanna look at way out into the future. Here's your, here's your solution for today with what resources you have available to you, but going long-term out, you know, these fields, how many of these do you want? Where do you want them? How we fund them? How we maintain them? You know, you don't wanna riot at that 10-year point and have everybody in a bloodbath trying to figure out where it's supposed to come from. So that's all I would advise. And the only other caution on ERF, you know, things like maintenance of effort could be upwards of 400,000, one outplacement on a modest side is 69,000 to 100,000. So even a $900,000 is nine outplacement price, you know? So it's, it is, it is, but Trump said it's also something, you know, that can go over there. So just keeping in mind, you know, a solution for now makes sense, but then a long-term plan so that we're not in a position like this again, you know, also makes sense. And I, that's a, not reliance on a structure like ERF, so that's flush weight break.
Thank you for taking with Dr. Willis. Jayden, really quickly, could those two things be separated? So a, a, a solution as to getting the field passed, so whether it is decided to go to grass or turf? And then separately, we plan for the 10-year plan for whenever it is to be replaced again with a turf or whether the, if, I guess, if we go grass, there won't need to be a lot, I guess, as much money put into such a plan? So could those two things be separated or do they have to have, sort of happen concurrently? Where if we pass a, the turf, we also have to pass a plan just for, for 10 years down the road sake, for a plan that sort of pays for it?
Well, I mean, you have to, you have to solve your immediate problem, which is the turf field now, but I think you can do both. In my opinion, you could do both now and then you could use your other, you know, other groups and committees in the town to try to figure out, looking forward, how many, again, how many of these fields do you want? Who's gonna own them? Where are they gonna get budgeted? That's it. Yes, definitely.
Jacob, then Christine, then Jaden, just like everything. Just to Sanucci's point and Dr. Willis' point, the ERF, you know, I absolutely agree, we, we do need to be careful in that, but I don't, I also agree, that's not something that's, should be taboo to talk about, but we're at this discussion for department of ERF. We've given out seven one and I think that's reasonable for us to have that discussion. Within the context that, you know, as Dr. Willis pointing out, there are other things that may need to be funded out of that account.
I was basically gonna say the same thing here, Jacob, but, and, and as far as what Jayden said, I do think that the second we decide to go forward with this, if we decide to go forward with replacing this turf in two years or three years, then at that moment, the 10-year plan has to happen. So in my opinion, they are absolutely more or less one in the safe. So while I think it's awesome if we can somehow get a grant to cover the initial 850 or however much we can get, we still at that moment have to have our, our plan for the next 10 years, because unfortunately, I think that's what happened in 2013. They had a million dollars in, of a plan, but nobody thought of 10 years. And here we are. So we, in essence, you know, this town's on this board of ed, has to come up with what to do about the first replacement and, and in essence, what to do about the replacement 12 years from now. So my two cents on that, but...
Thank you.
I am in agreement with all of them. I agree with what Jayden said too, you know, we need to, that, that was my point, for bringing up ERF, I agree with Dr. Willis, it can't be a long-term, we, we can't say we're gonna use the ERF to fund this on goal. The intent of it is the first payment, make that payment and then start the sinking fund, start how we're gonna pay for the next field, how do we pay for the next 10-year field? Because otherwise, we're just perpetually looking at $100,000 a year, every year from now until the ends of time to, to cover the turf field, instead of us being able to plan for it and pay for it. So I, I agree, I think we need to have some sort of compromise between the board of ed and the, and the town side to look at how we get this first thing done. I can look to see if there's any opportunity when the budget opens up to put in additional bonding at the state level. I don't know if that's gonna happen or not this, this go-round, but I can look to put in money for that. I don't know how well it'll be, because we've got the million dollars for the fire department with my last go-round, but I can see if there's any opportunity for state bonding also, because it is outdoors and it can be linked to outdoor activity, possible COVID-ish stuff at the state level. I'll let you find out. But again, I agree with, I agree with what Jayden, Jacob and Christine said, basically. Find a way to fund the first one, let's set up a plan, so we're not here again in 10 years looking for another bond after each, every time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Joe.
I think what I feel is important here is some of the passion, is that while we talk tonight, and I know we have, February is another one of those modest updates, that we don't stop talking. I think we've mentioned words like coin and some grant, all of which sound good in the theory, but if we don't get any grants, we still have a problem, you know? And if we're, if we're looking at using things like the ERF, then how much money do we need to keep in there to maintain what we need for our students? And what does that mean? So we've got time between now and then to keep having these conversations.
Thank you, Kelly. Is there any further discussion before you went to agenda item three? You don't wanna, we feel anyone else, any, one on, oh please.
Well, it comes down to the delay in signing of the, the grounds and maintenance agreement, although, you know, the town has been still doing the work. In regards to an agreement that, I've already, the town manager already had authority to go ahead and sign it. I think it was at a council meeting, I don't know if it was in the summer or whatever, but Mike Rosen was authorized to sign it. I held off from signing it because I understand you wanted to have this meeting to discuss things, as you had mentioned, there's been, about working in conjunction to, co-actively together on the turf field ideas, things like that. So at this point, do Dr. Willis and I sign that contract that we're pretty much abiding by on the town side and I think the board is as well, doing what, you know, was required to do, and have been worked out together in the past?
I'm, because we voted yes on the field and ground agreement contingent on this meeting. I think we go back to the minutes, but that would be my yes.
Okay, so then, we were just in, not in the finals for a little bit, because really, we should have made a place, whatever the date was that we had signed. And we didn't. Okay, so then Dr. Willis and I will proceed with just finalizing everything, but we both wanted to make sure since you had your filings, we'll take care of it.
Okay. Is that, just to clarify, is that a formal vote from the council as well or is that just...
It's already been, I just, I just wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable with us signing it, so a straw poll, whatever, however you wanna handle it. We've already, I already have the authority that you grant it up for me.
Yeah.
Well, Mike Rosen, but he's the town manager. It's up to you, how you wanna handle that.
I don't see any strong objections unless anyone has an issue.
It says contingent on us working together, so I think that's...
I think this is the first, first big step, so I would say...
As long as you're all comfortable with it, then we can sign it.
Yeah. Okay. One more question for Dana?
It's not a monetary question, it's a safety question, I started and asked it earlier. But are there significant pros and cons via a turf field versus a grass field, safety-wise for our athletes? Overall, what do we find is more of a safer environment? I don't know if that's for Pete or Mr. Roger.
I would, seeing as we handled most of the maintenance part, I would have to defer to Jonathan being the professional in the, the field division as to what he has seen more injuries on, whether it's grass or the artificial turf.
Yeah, I, I, I think there's, there's some differing opinions and, you know, you, you can read in one way or the other as it relates to injuries. Some coaches think that synthetic turf, you know, has, has greater injury on the athlete where other coaches believe that the natural grass, I'm, I'm, had, being not a controlled surface is, is worse for the athlete. So there, there's, there's definitely differing of opinions as it relates to that. I am not an injury specialist. We, we develop, you know, we definitely develop surfaces that are safe and the surfaces, whether they're synthetic or natural grass, would be safe and they meet the, the requirements of the, of the industry as, as it relates to either of those surfaces. You know, I, I think it was reported here today that there was no increase in injuries over the, over the life of the, of the turf thus far, or no reporting that has indicated such. Therefore, I, you know, I, I just read that as that, that, you know, there, there's no one complaining of, of a specific injury that's being caused by synthetic turf. There is some studies out there that say, you know, practicing on synthetic turf and going to natural grass or vice versa can have an effect on, on athletes. But I, I would really, I would really want your athletic trainer to, to weigh in on that more than just the person designing the surface. Like I said, the surface is designed to meet all the industry standards, whether that be Gmax, Hicks, things of that nature. And the natural grass surface is similar to that.
Thank you. We also have a, like, Council, you have one more question?
Yeah, I would just, again, there is a lot out there to look, especially as soccer players, especially for girls, ACL, MCL and concussions are significantly worse on turf fields than they are on grass. You know, it's a faster surface of play.
Right, that's, yeah.
It moves quicker and in the winter, that entire surface underneath freezes, so much harder concussion injury is major and ACL, MCL tears are higher on turf than they are on grass.
No, that's, I was talking about, it's the speed of it, right?
It's pretty much the same, right? It's ACL, MCL concussions are worse on turf. And not only that, our turf, which was top of the line turf when we got it in 2012, it was not a mid-level, it was the top of the line turf. The rubber pellets that are in it are carcinogenic, they're torn up tires. So...
I was also thinking, like, not only the physical aspect, right?
Yeah.
And the speed of the sport, but any, any other, any other, you know, chemicals or whatever that's in there?
You can bring the...
Versus the divots that can be in regular field, and then you have football players, soccer players, and that's different, so...
And lacrosse too.
But I guess, I guess there's gonna be pros and cons for, for both, but yeah, the speed of it and the heart of it.
I asked the injury question before, which is why I found it really odd, because I personally know at least five people that have been hurt on our turf field, with ACL, MCL blowouts, ankle, Achilles blowouts, so multiple concussions, and that happens on all turf fields, and, you know, whether they're FSAs fields or ours or Neo Smith's, so, but there's a lot of people that lost.
I didn't mean to do your financial conversation to this, but I thought it was important. Thank you.
Is there any other discussions, just wanted to open to everyone, the Council Blue Bear, Council Blue Sierra, you all set before we move on to agenda item three?
All set, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All set, thank you.
We see so in that, and we'll move on to agenda item three, joint discussion of town council board education regarding the COVID relief fund. Please, over Dr. Willis, trying to give you items, some, and any additional comments?
I'll turn that over to Dr. Willis.
So the school system, like everybody, has had, you know, quite a difficult year from the standpoint of, you know, logistics, managing things, keeping everybody safe, educated and healthy. And so last year, we paid a pretty big price in human capital with the amount of modifications and heavy lifting that we had to do, you know, and everybody had to do it with respect to quarantines, it affected all the families, it affected every virtual workspace in the United States and the world. And so for us, it meant a series of impactful and cascading quarantines for kids. And even though we were in school, we were one of the districts that was in for many more days than most of the other districts with most of our kids in. We did run almost an entire separate school system for a while of about 400, say, kids at its maximum, almost an entire building, if you would think about it that way, of kids in a, you know, in a, in a remote program of their choosing. So the year had extreme complications. The logistics that we had to do were incredible. And the silver lining in this, if there is any, not that I would say there's a silver lining to any pandemic, we wouldn't wanna minimize anyone suffering, but I do, you know, but if one had to look at a bright side, one of the bright sides, so to speak, was there were areas where we did not use resources that, that would more likely be used, so, due to the dynamics. And this pandemic is constantly changing. The needs that we had last year are not the same needs that we have this year. The dynamics of the situation, as you've noticed, when you look at it, it's constantly evolved, or the requirements are constantly evolving. So at the end of last year, there were areas where we had budget lines that were under because, you know, the dynamics of the pandemic at that time did not have us using those resources the same way as say we would be using this year. So for example, special education tuition, we tried to create a one pager, so to speak, to highlight that, you know, here are some of the major areas where we were under budget last year, and this was the ratio proportion of, you know, of that, that, you know, that overall impact. So, you know, for instance, special tuitions were one of the biggest areas that we were under budget. So you'll notice that was, you figured, jumped out the pie here. So knowing that on one pagers, graphics are usually helpful, this is designed to give you an extent of the magnitude of, of where that impact showed. So special education tuitions, district pays significantly less. The pandemic impacted services that were not, not provided during that time, many kids that, you know, had actually gone to certain programs were now... Many kids that had actually gone to certain programs were now in remote versions of that. So these, that allowed us, and the billing was a little different. You know, the choice participation landed in this line too. So this line ended the year significantly under. Student transportation, and there were entire blocks of time where buses were not running. 400 children were not being transported during their, you know, during a long period of pandemic where they were in that remote program. You know, there was really big underutilization, so that also resulted in, as you can see, one of the bigger chunks of the pie. Salaries, we did not have an athletic supervisor for all intents and purposes. That person became the AP hand athletic supervisor to help us through the year. Knowing that, you know, we were in a strange year, it didn't make sense to fill that position. So there were things like that that we did. All of these things that I'm describing, though, came with great logistical difficulties for us to accomplish what we talked, to try to manage it without these programs. So for instance, we would have much rather had all the buses running and 400 remote children. It was a very difficult situation to deal with. So, you know, those salaries also included things like, you know, just being unable to fill many positions. People were not really super eager to work in classrooms during this time. People that had been, you know, doing it for many years were deciding to get staff, you know, last year. Nurses were very difficult to find and often we were understaffed there. The nurses have done a phenomenal job. Contact tracing, the people that we had to do it, it's a tough job. People aren't happy when you're reaching out, obviously, it wouldn't be. Difficult kind of situation to be in. And people just weren't, weren't eager to be doing it. So we had people picking up the weight of doing that. Again, the silver lining in that is that there is a chunk of money left over from that year because of it. Because of those, those efforts and the things that your, your staff was willing to do. So that's 17%, a fairly decent chunk. And then repairs, maintenance, facility, all things like that. Overall, you know, when the building wasn't being utilized, there were certain blocks of time where the, the whole building was remote. Our buildings were remote, the district was remote. That didn't require the same level of action, many of these things. And projects that, you know, were slated weren't necessarily going to be able to get done. And that also played out in some leftover funds or under budget areas. When you have situations where, you know, people are not, not working, or not in the positions that they were anticipated to be in, you also have like Medicare, social security, and other things like that. That'll be, you know, that will have a remaining balance due to it, retirement, ICMA, although some of that, you know, is a little higher, other things or not. And so that grouping there, that kind of going in a percentage of impact, was also something that resulted in, you know, cemented your funds. And of course, the heating and energy, this is part of the UISF agreement. So that's something that we're familiar with. And there was, as you might imagine, some underutilization there because there were times when the buildings were just not occupied for a short time. So that was a really not one of the year. And I think we did, I think the community did an amazing job. The kids did an amazing job. And the federal government, the state government recognized the difficulties that districts across the country were facing. And so you saw the ARPS funds, the ARPSers, and things like that become available to communities in a variety of ways they helped communities. The thing to note about these is that they help the communities because the communities need the help. You don't have a pandemic that kills 700, 800,000 Americans and not have, you know, the need to have some help. So these ARPS and ARPSers were provided because we needed help. And that's, that's both town side and board side across the country. And so the charts at the bottom, kind of color quoted as best they could with respect to trying to get it all smashed off a page for everybody, was, you know, to give you a sense of where those funds were used and are currently being utilized. You know, the, the needs of the pandemic were great, as you're aware. I think everybody knows what these social, emotional, psychological impacts were, what the family impacts were. Families that were, you know, vulnerable, who were just made more vulnerable by the pandemic. I still hear a reoccurring theme that families are suffering, people are suffering. And a lot of times, the conversation starts with something like, you know, well, don't you understand? You know, dot, dot, dot. And they go on to express a great deal of suffering that people are having. Social workers, counselors, these are positions that are in place for that reason. Once again, you know, you, you don't have a global pandemic or a situation like this, this many people that have perished and these kinds of complications without there being a need to do something. And so through those utilizations, these are the kinds of things that needed to happen. One of the, the bigger needs, you know, that has transferred over to this year, this year's animal looks different. Same species, but looks different for us. It's actually more complicated this year than it was in the past because not everybody is in one category. So when things happen, they happen differently to different groups based on the, the situation that that group is in, that, you know, population that that group is in. So, you know, the nurses have never been more overwhelmed than they are right now, even last year. Personally, I have not been more overwhelmed than I have ever been in my career. In fact, while we were having this meeting, two workover processes came in. I was starting the contact tracing process while we're having a meeting, because if I wait till I get home tonight, it'd be nearly impossible for me to catch all those kids and people before we get to tomorrow. So that's an example that every moment in the day now has become a moment of constant multitasking, but all kinds of efforts, things like that. But again, you know, silver lining, so to speak, is that when you go through a situation like last year where the animal looked a little different, it yielded the result of having some funds that were there underused. And the town and its wisdom, it created the CRF. And you know the basic language of the CRF, the status of which was to be written between June 1st and September. But the core objective of the CRF was that if there were funds available, that those funds could be utilized cross financial year. Whereas if you had a grossly underutilized transportation system one year, but you had this massive need to address learning loss in a summer program next year, you could utilize what you were not able to spend on transportation for the kids that are in the general education population and would normally not have the benefit of that summer program. So the utilization of the funds here is specified in the middle section where at the end of the year, there was a balance of about 796. Throughout the process of the board coming to the close of the year, there were a series of documents where there were many discussions over where resources would be allocated, where some investments were going to be made in the future. By the way, the budget, as we are starting to work on it now, even with departments and going through the process, going over mini-gritty form, what they're asking for, there are many places, as we anticipated, where the investments that were made to offset the impact of this year now need to be, you know, need to be reinitiated, reinserted. Special education is up by $400,000 next year. So as we come out of this past phase of the pandemic, we face new things that the animal has morphed into something different now. And the learning loss is amplified across all groups and populations. And we need to address that, you know, it's like what we were given in one hand, you know, then has taken away in another. This year, you know, we have to do things to address it. So associate educators were also a part of the picture here that as we got into this new wave, where now they're not remote, but they're actually in this quasi-form of here, not here. And screen to stay allows kids to be here, but the parents can't keep them home. But kids that are not, that are not contacts in school cannot benefit from screen to stay. So for instance, half of the children that I will be contacting for tomorrow have no choice. They have to be out. So there's a whole bunch of groups that because of their, you know, their groupings have to be out, or where they got, you know, their close contact, have to be out. Anything in the community, you're out. Anything in the sports, you're out. Anything, pizza parties, birthday parties, or hoops and gatherings, you know, Thanksgiving. You're close contact during that, you're out. And you're out those 10 days. So these associate educators have to address the learning loss and need tools for the teachers and, you know, partners with the teachers and addressing the varying, constantly different needs of the kids in a classroom because of these fluctuations, but also have to be able to reach out to the families at home who are often now struggling what to do. Now they can't go to work, you can't, you know, which one of us won't go to work tomorrow? Because we have to be here with little Walter. And that's going to create an issue for us in our days, in our schedules, in our workdays, and what kinds of days do we use? And income implication potentially. And we need help, and the associate educators provide that, both for kids in the class that are going to need some assistance as they go through it, and kids that are at home. So even though we morphed screen to stay for certain populations, the, there's still these mixed groups in and out all the time, constantly. And over the break that was four days long, we had at least two to three COVID patients putting out a variety of kids and a variety of programs. So these associate educators are really our flexible groups. And we move constantly between schools and between populations on the cover of the issues that arise. Also, in the summer, we were able to put together some program. The cost of that program, if I put it in a budget for next year, this possibility, is about $273,000. If it's, you know, for, say, the, the staff that would do it for general education. Now, if we could use some of the funds recovered from last year, AKA transportation, salaries, things like that, then enroll it, because the wisdom of the CRF had kind of stepped forward in the past, then we could actually provide this program, this option for general education students. I know also the families that are struggling. And do that, you know, the blood, sweat and tears that were suffered from last year could then be transferred to the benefit of addressing that learning loss in an ongoing fashion in the summer next year. And so because the ARPS are basically trying to help us hold down the fort now, you know, another example would be the S R twos are really for some of the most impacted groups, which were the youngest kids. Because the kids, when they come into K, you know, in the lower grades, they really need those years. And if they don't get a certain amount of progress during that time, that transfers into a magnified effect for the grades as they continue up into the higher grades. So the pandemic last year, you know, and remotes and all that greatly affected that population. Both preschool coming into K, they're not ready, they're not ready the way they normally would be. So we have a teacher in K, and we have a teacher in two, talks that some of those sizes give them much more personalized attention to these next three years. And that's one of the most profound ways we can infect those groups, is by giving them the most personalized attention possible we can. So that's how the ARPS are going to allocate, especially that R three, over the next couple of years because you can use it over the next couple of years. So we're given that ability, so we can do what we can for all members. But these summer programs are impactful. And so that was the thought, was that we would be requesting, although for logistical reasons, I suppose we were unable to get together between June and September, that now that we are able to sit down, that there'd be some consideration potentially getting to extending the CRF. Having a conversation now so that we can offer that summer program. If I had to include that in the budget and we had to take the impact of, say, the special ed decrease, you're looking at $673,000 way out of the way. More than a percent and a half already out, already set and stuff. If we were to do this general ed, and it's already a percent set pretty much in stone for special ed next year. We already have a percent of the board budget pretty much nailed that, without any other conversations. So that just gives you an idea. And the more of these individuals that we cannot help recover from these kinds of COVID impacts, the greater number will be seeking special services, both through intervention and potential special education. So what we don't solve, we exasperate. You know, and now's the time to kind of throw everything out if we can, because we certainly have problems with that. So that's essentially what brings us to, you know, to the topic that we're, we just did not have a chance for to get together from June to September period. So this is the first opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Willett. Only before, if there's any commentary from board of education members, if you would like to add anything or for councilors to have questions for Dr. Willett or board of education members.
So obviously, Dr. Willett, thank you for putting this together. I just kind of wanted to reiterate the fact that this fund also has no risk to be town councilled. But if for some reason we do not need it, which I understand that there is a very good likelihood, that money will revert back to the town. So I just want to let everybody know that it's kind of like a no-risk option. If you all do in fact approve it. And also that, I know Dr. Willett's got, you know, the associate educators in the extended school year, the dollar amounts here, but this is also something that we'll go through the finance and facilities committee as well as the entire board of that, just to kind of go through and make sure that it's everything that we had talked about that falls under the COVID relief funds. And I recognize that, you know, we don't exactly know what next summer's going to look like. So it might, you know, it might evolve differently, maybe better, maybe not, who knows? By the time we would actually be submitting the dollar amounts to the fund. So I just kind of wanted to say that to all of you, that there will be, you know, lots of kind of looking at this along the way for the next six to eight, nine months, whatever it ends up being. But again, that's, that's pretty much all I had in addition to this one pager. Thank Dr. Willett for the one pager. That was presented here tonight, but if anybody has any questions, you can certainly.
Are there any questions? And again, for councilors that are involved, if you want to raise your hand, raise hand functions. Otherwise, I'll take questions from the council in person. Seeing none. I, I, you were writing quite well, so. Of course.
Okay, so I have a question in regards to, you had mentioned like it's a no-risk thing, right? So I guess my question back is, last year, there was about 250-ish thousandish left that was put into the COVID fund. But you guys used the COVID fund instead of paying for it out of the $800,000 that was left in the budget. So if that's the case, going forward, can we say if there are dollars left at the end of next year, you're going to use it, use those dollars before going to the fund? Because then we just keep perpetuating the, if you had taken 250,000 out of your 800,000, we'd be looking at $550,000 left instead of 800,000.
Yeah, but the 250 is.
Current year. But that is current year salaries, so we really.
Oh, no, no.
What are you talking about?
The 250,000, 257, 283, yeah, what it was for last year's COVID fund.
Right.
So that $280,000, you had $800,000 left at the end of the year. You could have paid for that 280,000 out of the 800,000 rather than using the COVID fund and then have another 800,000 left. It would have.
I think at the time, and Dr. Willett correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we knew we were going to have $800,000 left over. So yes, we did run, I have the list here, we did run basically that 283 through the COVID fund. I don't think we anticipated having that much left over at the end. But that's a fair point, you know, and I think, I don't think the same thing would happen this year. And obviously, and I think we filled just about every teacher position. We're not expecting any, let's hope as long as the schools don't shut down, we should be using our buses normally.
As long as the.
Yeah, so I mean, nothing's, I guess, ever.
You know, the thing about it is that at the end of the day, it all rolls to the town. So utilized or not, if there's an inferior balance, ultimately it rolls to the town. And CRF will not be, you know, understandably, it will not be available in perpetuity. And I think that the idea was ultimately, we had a lot of weird challenges last year. Nobody was buying food, you know. Like, and so we, as you know, we make a lot of them, right?
They were great companies. They've used their solid years there.
No, thanks. So the point is that regardless, you know, there were things that we had to fill holes with. And to Mr. Griffin's point, you really just don't know until you get to the end. And ultimately, the concept was as long as the coronavirus is with us, it constantly flexes and flows and changes. We don't know what we're having exactly when. And so that was the genius behind the design the council had, was that this is here. Rolls into this and at the end of the day, if it's not needed, it could roll the ERF. And the ERF has already gotten its percentage rolls to the town. So the general fund doesn't risk anything here really. It just, you know, if it's needed and ultimately can be used for the offsets of things that were impacted by the virus, then it's available for that purpose. And that's what we would be looking for next year. The thing, the difference between last year and this year is we have a much more specific idea as to what we would make and we're having much, much earlier. So this now, this proposal would be to use it for the summer. And that's a very specific utilization of the ARPS money. That money that we didn't use from all the suffering of last year, you know, there were chunks of that, that in this case, this particular piece could do great good for these children in the summer of 2022. And so, and at the end of the day, again, if not all of it is utilized for that purpose, it rolls back to the town. So, you know, there's some really great opportunity to do wonderful, you know, good for these kids by doing the summer program. And that's the proposal here, is have those funds go directly and specifically to that and help with the, you know, the quarantine issues that we're having. And then at the end, when you get to June to September, if that's fulfilled its purpose and then hopefully we see, you know, coronavirus is heading in a different direction away from humanity, then we really would not need to have any further extension of that. But that was, that was the decision. Plus, I don't know who's hanging these things in here, but they look a lot like.
I was thinking like the treats from, from Dr. Stoops. Exactly.
All I see right now.
I thought of that when we first got down. Okay, so I guess I have one more question for my own, my own application then, Dr. Willitt. If we were $270, almost $271,000 under in spent last year, and you're saying it's going to go to $400,000, is it $400,000 from actuals or $400,000 from budget? Because you're talking about a $671,000 swing.
Yeah, well, right now, it's based on the, every time we do it, we base it on, you know, what we can see from the programs in place now that are going to be needed. But the problem that we have at the moment is that probably more than ever before, the kids that are in need, you know, these programmatic requirements, these are things that are been exacerbated by the pandemic. So we might have made a projection before, but we're, we're actually seeing a lot more, I don't want to use the word later, but a lot more required of the school system with respect to the needs of the children because the pandemic is excessive. And so that was the only we had today, is just looking at it and going, you know, these, these numbers have names associated with them. There are people that are connected to the numbers we're talking about next year. Not just some projections about what might be the case. This is the programs that, that they need.
I guess that's my, my question overall then, right? Is this spent as in outplacement or spent as an intervention in these programs and everything else? Okay, so that's.
Probably, I would say that to some extent, outplacements are also. But it's, it's everything. There is not one, whether you look at any of the categories that the pandemic has affected, psychologists need people to cover the bases. Speech and mind pathologists, we needed people and need people to cover the bases. And there just aren't enough people to do it. And the services that are needed are much more than what we were introducing. So across all categories, the vulnerable, in every situation when you have a challenge to, I think, our culture, you know, to people, the people that are vulnerable in one way or another feel that more profoundly. And then they need assistance and they need to, those issues, those challenges need to be addressed. That's what's happening right now. Whether you're talking about general education population students or students that are students of special education, those needs have been magnified and are, you know, clearly a problem. We don't have, one of the biggest challenges, for instance, transportation, there's no way we'll have. We're not going to be in shutdown for transportation. Salaries, you know, we're, we're needing to add, we don't have that option of not adding the assistant principal. And, you know, or not having this, you know, direct director. We have to have both of those positions. Not only that, you have to pay a lot of these people additional funds to do certain things that, you know, that need to be covered that we would not normally have needed. Everything this year is extended by individuals to make it work because, you know, the needs now of these kids, they're, they're just so profound. And they suffered through a long span of time where they just weren't getting everything that they could have gotten. So, you know, we won't get those kinds of things happening this year. Whether it's transportation, we're going to get nailed with the tuitions, whereas there was a lull, now there'll be a spike. You know, the salaries, you're not going to see that kind of thing, not at the end of this year. And so then residually, some of those other items won't either. Cleaning, I'm not sure where, I don't think we're going to end horrible in cleaning, but I don't think that that's going to save the day with respect to balances either. So, you know, I think at the end of this year, we have more so than in many other years in the past, more of a risk of running right on red line. And that those funds would be very helpful in helping provide, say, the silver lining for the kids who had to suffer.
So my last question then is the ER, the CRF and the S or funds. Those are not in your regular budget, correct? They're being handled directly through the funding, so it's not hard then to get.
I don't think they are hard then to get. I would have to check. S or, I would have to check.
Yeah, I think S or also should be kind of the off budget.
I would think it is, but.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from council members or comments, concerns, questions from Board of Ed members? Otherwise, it's just a general discussion or a general consensus to continue the fund and then meet back again between June and September, trying to, to reassess the feasibility.
Yeah, you, there was a request at the end to transfer certain amount into that fund that that would be then either fulfilled by the council as an extension of that fund or not. That is in order, totally in the process.
Are you looking to extend it? Is that?
Well, technically, if we hadn't been going to a place in this, where, you know, everybody was going to, that this, these two bodies would have sat down between June and September to talk about that. Understandably, there was a lot of things so that there was not an opportunity. And that this is the first chance we have to do. But, you know, the very solid ask for what we would be using. So that's, that would be the request that this then get to you with the language, you know. But the understanding that in this case, we really are using it not for materials so much, but for food. Because it's the people we need the most. It's the staff for the summer school. It's the, you know, those educators that we otherwise not have access to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So was there, like, did you need to know, I'm sorry if I missed it. Do you need to know soon or does the Board of Ed need to know soon if we're gonna?
We're forming the budget now. We're forming the budget now. Superintendent's proposed budget is typically the second week roughly in January. And I'm going to speak to Ms. Griffin after, I mean, tonight about a few things. But these are all really generally the budget. And so, you know, what I would be recommending to the Board will change based on what happens to CRF. We do have, you know, as I'm going through everything, we have three big hurdles. One is there were investments, and investments help in the year that is right next to the year to make them. But they often lower the budget or the subsequent year. And so that was an evil that we knew was going to be a part of the picture. So this year 23 has climbing back out of some of the things that we had. The second is, you know, obviously that we have some, some impacts from COVID that we have to address. Special ed is one, and this would be another. So we will be climbing a bit out of that investment situation. And we'll also need to address special ed needs and we'll need to address learning loss. And if we put all those together, that's almost a percent and a half to two percent before we talk about. And typically, the town generally likes about a 2.5 or roughly. That's generally the thematic kind of thing in there is what can be supported is a 18 to a 2 something and so on. The Board's request would be two almost, without talking about anything other than special ed. You know, summers would perhaps, if we included that, and kind of the investment situation. That's a tough place to start. So CRF, agree.
I was going to say, I think basically what we need from you guys is this purpose of agreement. On the last page, just revise. So I don't know if you guys want to put on a council agenda and just go on it.
It's going to be one change or two changes.
After reconciliation, just like the ERF fund, it has to go all the way through reconciliation. Like after the end of the year closing, it's just the same sort of thing as with the ERF, right Lisa?
That's usually in December or January.
The ERF is usually, it has to be in the third, the, the third quarter of the year. The Education Reserve Fund. The COVID fund we funded earlier in the previous year. And certainly the audit is almost complete. And I, my understanding, I don't think there's been any changes yet to the surplus that I'm aware of. So if the town council is so desired to want to put this out of their next agenda or whichever agenda you want it on, I don't think there would be any issue in, if you decide to allocate those funds, I don't think there would be any issue with allowing that to happen if you chose to do so. Just the CRF fund, excuse me, the Education Reserve Fund could have to wait until the third quarter. And we could put it in the tickler file to, for allocation at that point, if, for your consideration. So if you give me direction that you want it on the next agenda for consideration, I can.
Are there any councilors that would be opposed to having it on the next agenda for consideration?
It wonders, can I have that ties to the audit?
Counselor Felusi, Counselor Luba, do you have any objection for it being on the next regular meeting agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's Luba. No, no, no objection. Thank you.
This, this is Brenda Felusi. I find no objection. I'm very agreeable to what I've seen in this packet and what I've heard. And I'd like to take this opportunity to express to Dr. Willitt and his entire staff to thank you for taking care of our kids, keeping them safe, educated and healthy during this pandemic and continuing to do so. Like you said, this was a very heavy lift. And I just don't have the words to express how thankful I am that, for all the work that you've done.
So I think there's general consensus, please, that we can have that on the next agenda. So Dr. Willitt, are you able to attend? Write any additional information or Christine or any Board of Ed members that would like to attend? If there's additional questions needed, we can also transmit them electronically and add it to the packet.
Yeah, electronic, December 14th.
Okay. No worries. All right. Well then, if there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:45 PM.
Second.
Actually, you can second it.
Second.